So is everybody ready to go?
Yes.
So whenever the, you're ready up there? Hey, good evening. Let's call to order the, this meeting of the Issaquah City Council, a budget workshop. We have staff with us again this evening and on the agenda is really, we're going, it's our second session. We're going to continue with the general fund. It was just so much fun last time, we want to keep going. And that's really the only agenda items. We have three hours scheduled. And so I'm just going to start by giving, passing it over to Diane Marcotte, Director of Finance. Thanks Diane.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Can we look at the questions and answers from last time first in case we still need something more about?
Well, let me, I was under your impression, so correct me if I'm wrong, if these were not all just gleaned from last time. Are these, you know, actually, I'm thinking about Josh's questions. Which one are you referring to? Mary Lou?
I have a question on that. Q and A that we already have.
So we, okay, okay. So these are beyond, they're not just the ones that council members share, submitted yesterday?
Correct.
Okay. See, these are from last time. Did everybody get a copy? We have electronic copy of these as well? I'm sure we do. We just have to look for it. Do we have electronic? Yeah. Okay.
Is it okay to ask questions?
Yes, so let me see, let me get an indication of, have those in the hot seat if they're ready. Bob, is this something we can field?
Sure, I'll leave both the room and then if you got some questions. But Emily, why don't you go first because you prepared these.
So there were four questions that were answered, or asked last meeting. First was, what is the breakdown of the sales tax sources? And I think that question was really asking the different sectors, how they contribute to our sales tax revenue. Second was, would staff provide the BNO outreach schedule? The third, has the city staff considered extending reciprocity to any other cities? And that was with regard to the recreation user fee. And lastly, could the staff provide future presentations on non-general fund funds, which would include some of the similar information to what Diane presented at the last meeting, including some historical trends and fund balance information. And we've answered all of those questions predominantly through email over the last week. So on the first, the breakdown, breakdown of sales tax sources, provided a hard copy in your packet tonight. We will also send out this packet electronically.
If I could do a little point of clarification, we inadvertently printed page 15 of the report, but we have it on our city website, the second quarter report. So you can see the breakdown with 53% being retail trade. In June, it was around 14%. That was construction, but because of the summer months, you know, when we get into September, we see that lag in the sales tax collection, so that number varies from quarter to quarter depending on the activity. We've also provide you a historical perspective in this report of the retail trade. And then if you can scroll down a little bit, you can see the little blip in 2011 in our construction activity. So, so year to date, year to year over comparison, we're up in 2014 as compared to 2013 for our construction. So that is a standard report that's included in our quarterly report. So we'll be, in late October, you'll be getting the third quarter report that will have the most recent financial information as of September 30th.
Okay, thank you.
Great. The second question was the BNO outreach schedule and we provided that. In addition, Jen had stated that she would provide the date of the Chamber of Commerce discussion and that will be held tomorrow from 2:00 to 4:00 PM at Tippets Creek Manor. And we've attached a hard copy of their website announcement for that event. We held the first of the open houses this morning at City Hall. The third question was, yes?
Paul, does anyone have a question?
Yeah, please.
Two things. One, I also thought that there was some outreach to some of the mayor, major, you know, taxpayers in town. And I didn't know if we were going to list them, but I thought we should say that we're going out to talk to X number of, so should that be in the answer somewhere? And the second one is, who from the city is going to the chamber function from 2:00 to 4:00 tomorrow?
So, we are doing individual outreach to the top 11, 12 taxpayers. Jen and I are doing that directly. And then we just received notice today about the change in the schedule, so Jen brought that information to us. Part of the issue is I've got to be able to rearrange my schedule for tomorrow afternoon to be able to attend, but if not, we're going to look at what other resources we may have beyond Economic Development Department to be able to attend.
So somebody?
There will be someone from the city there, yes.
Thanks Paul.
Yep, the third question was about considering a reciprocity program with one or more of our neighboring communities. And Anne, I think, addressed that briefly when she was here. But we've restated that we did discuss that possibility when we were considering the fee proposal. And we had some conversation about whether that was truly a viable option, how it would affect the intended revenue generation of the fee. And lastly, that it would be difficult for us to provide an apples-to-apples benefit across city lines. And that I believe our primary user of our recreation services does not have as robust recreation programming that they provide as a municipality. So there was some concern about whether we would equally benefit from such an agreement. So that's why it was not recommended. And then I think the last question is one that we're going to get into tonight.
Josh, any comment? As the maker of the question, yes? So we just got a little-
Was that the maker of that question? Oh. I guess just, I mean, if there's, you know, working with other jurisdictions in the future. No?
Okay, so I don't, I don't think we're asking anything further of staff on that issue. All right, thank you. And the last question?
Last question, I think we're getting into tonight, and that's just additional information about other funds.
That sounded like a segue.
It did. Take it as such.
All right.
Question four, was that what was just answered?
Yes.
So I think we'd like to clarify this a little bit. Diane?
Well, if you want the historical information for all 34 funds and the historical, and I guess I'm asking for clarification because I didn't necessarily fully understand the question.
Who asked the question?
There we go. I think it was related to, there was a particular page that talked, that showed each of the funds and some of them, I, the question was, you presented it as, this is a capital expenditure year. And I understand that. And a number of those funds you can look at and you can see, I think there was a, I don't have, I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but there's an aggregate reduction in funds and something like 15 million, something like that. And my, the question was around, yeah, some of them, some of them are, are capital projects and wanted to know which ones weren't and where the, the spend downs, the factors around the spend downs are.
Good. We've got that covered tonight.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay.
Great, thank you. I think, I think that's it. Thank you very much. So we can proceed.
So just a little bit of a recap, we pretty much went through the general fund and all of the major significant changes. And then tonight, the city has 34 funds that it budgets for, so some of them are very, very small and because they are like a trust account, you have to account for them separately no matter how small they are. So we're going to go through all of 34 funds tonight. Some of them in brevity, others in more detail, particularly when we get into capital projects. Because as we shared with you, particularly in 2015, we're going to be making significant investment in our capital projects. So continuing on, just a couple of recaps and additional informations. One of the things was when we were looking at the overall community funding, this is money that we give out to our partners in the community. And because of the way the budget and the funding sources, the funding sources are by those funds that are providing the money. What we attempted to do here was to put in one place grants and awards and third-party funding so that the council understands that this is a little over a million dollars. So when you look at our human services, that the human agency funding, that is just that funding that we pass on and it comes to you from the Human Services Commission and their recommendation. So that's 291,000. This, in 2015, the proposal is $130,000 for the various art programs. That's in the municipal art fund and we'll be talking about that also tonight. Then our lodging tax, our recommendation to the LTAC committee would be that they have $125,000 available to them to make awards to the community for tourism-related activity. Then the nonprofit funding, which will be the next slide, is those things that do not fit under that category, but they are things that this community has invested in those agencies in order to support the activities that they provide. And then lastly, we have the new funding to the Healthy Youth Initiative, which used to be the Issaquah Community Network. So in total, we provide third-party funding to over a million dollars to many, many agencies in this community's, as well as those agencies that support those services that we provide that are so needed in the community. So when we get to the nonprofit funding, the services, yes?
Tell me if you're going to get to this. So just by fund, so I like this cross through on, okay, here's a general category of expenditures, community funding. Human service agencies, general fund. Municipal art comes from general fund.
Comes from the municipal art fund, which is a special revenue fund.
Okay, so are we going to-
Yes.
We're going to get to that.
Yes.
And, because I saw, I know you have, the next slide goes to the nonprofit funding. You going to address the rest of them individually as well?
Lodging tax is a separate fund because those, those dollars are restricted for tourism. The nonprofit funding, we're, that is the next slide and I can walk you through that one. If it's deemed operational, we put it into the general fund, but it is, if it's capital in nature, then we put it into the capital improvement fund. And the Healthy Youth Initiative funding, because it's operational, is also in the general fund.
All right, thank you.
Okay. So going on to the nonprofit funding, the Services and Safety Committee reviewed the applications and they had presentations earlier this month from the various agencies that had submitted. At work is general fund at 20,000. That has been, all of the dollar amounts are consistent with prior years. So at work is 20,000. For the senior center, we provide them 99,000 in direct funding, but then we also have some in-kind services. So we have custodians and their salary and benefits and the supplies at 28,800. And then we also pay their utility bill, which is 6,400. So our support to the community center is a little over 134,000. Fish support is operational, general fund, 30,000, once again, consistent. Historical society, the feasibility study is a carryover from 2014. It is also a general fund commitment of 25,000. Fourth of July and DIA are also in the general fund in the non-departmental. Funding is the same as last year. Cougar Mountain Zoo, because it is capital in nature, is coming out of the Capital Improvement Special Projects Fund. Last year was our first funding for them. This would be their second year of funding for capital, capital-related projects. Art East is coming out of the Municipal Arts Fund because it's related to the, the activity associated with the Municipal Arts Fund. Village Theater has been 25,000 for the last several years. That is capital in nature. Mountains to Sound Greenway is general fund. And then the last one is the Arch Trust Fund of 25,000. Actually, I think that's 50,000. Actually, yes, it's the Capital Improvement Fund and, and I apologize, that should be 50,000. It should not be 25,000, so it's just an oversight with the data.
Diane, has the Art East always come out of that Municipal Arts Fund?
The last several years it has.
For the last two years?
Yeah, I believe it's the last couple, yes.
Go ahead, starting with-
So, I don't know if this is the right question to ask, but so Services and Safety, there are all the applications regarding the funding?
Yes.
Are there recommendations that came out or where are that? How did those relate to them?
Well, I can answer the mayor's part of that and then I'll give it to Eileen. And the mayor's recommendations are what's reflected in the budget.
I meant from the committee. Yeah. I got that.
During the presentations, we just simply listened to their presentations and did not make any recommendations or have, or have deliberation after that.
So I'm, I'm, so I'm trying to figure out how that helps us with our deliberations here then. If we don't, if we don't see those presentations and we don't have recommendations from the committee, I'm just trying to figure out how I would decide whether this is appropriate. So that's, that's a question not necessarily for the administration to answer, but maybe it's a question for the council to consider. Because I don't know who else, I mean, I only know of one other one that I know about, but I don't know if there may have been others. I don't know if they've, if the other ones who applied have gotten funds before, how they, I don't know anything now.
So I think that's a fair question. And though I'm not really sure how to deal with it here in this setting right now, we could go through, those of us who are on the committee and offer our own perspective on each of these.
Sure.
We could just go down the list. That could take a while. We could do it. If there's anything in particular that you should have, actually, I take that back. It was in the, the packet for that service, the, at least those. I don't know if you have access to those, have you seen those?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, okay. So as, those just as a background.
Yep.
But is there, so can I ask, at this point, do you have any questions about any in particular or would you more want, more, want more of a general response?
Well, I think it, it causes me to think we need a time designated during these budget deliberations to actually talk about them, which means we're going to have to all go out, who is interested, go out and look at those, that packet and see what those applications are. And, you know, review them to the detail that each one of us thinks is appropriate and then address, address our questions at one of our sessions.
Let's make a note of that as a to-do rather than right now.
Yes.
I think, because there, there might be other options as well for the committee to actually give a report.
Can I ask a question?
Hold on just one second, please. And Diane, as you're, and one thing about this list, so it doesn't match exactly what was in the packet for Services and Safety. And so I am assuming the other component for DIA will be in the council goals section. But there was no information about Mountains to Sound Greenway or the Arch Trust Fund. Those agencies haven't come traditionally in the past. They've been pretty much standard contracts that the city has had with the Mountains to Sound Greenway for their efforts promoting that. And then the Arch Trust Fund is an annual contribution that the city has. We've got a target, I, you know, target affiliated with that that comes from Arch and we generally try to meet that. But neither one of those agencies have come and testified before. They're kind of just standard contracts that we've had with those agencies for work that they do with us. And so they're a little, they're kind of a little different even though they fall within this category of nonprofit funding.
Okay, so one thing we don't have in comparison, at least in the packets we have for the others, is we do have prior year amounts for the, and I don't know if this is, those are covered anywhere else. I think Arch, I've seen the Arch one in this year's budget and it, it actually shows 50, which I also noted in last week's, it was noted as an actual increase of 13.5 in your summary of changes.
No, that's our Arch dues versus our contribution to the trust fund. So they're two different things. We have an annual obligation that is in the general fund, that is our dues for our participation in the, the cooperative. And this is the funding for affordable housing.
The trust fund?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the council, if you recall, when they want to, when Arch wants to make use of the funds, Development Services comes back to the council with a request to use those funds that we have provided to Arch.
Yeah, we see an agenda bill for, to, the council has to approve the trust fund expenditures.
Yes.
Yeah. And these, these have stayed stable for the last two years. The only one that's, that's new last year was Cougar Mountain Zoo, it was the first year they received funding. And then the Arch Trust Fund, we've seen, we've seen some variability in that contribution over the last four years. So one year we actually were unable to make any contribution to the Arch Trust Fund. And then we were able to get up to $100,000 and the past two years have been stable with that $50,000 contribution.
Okay. Mary Lou, do you have a question?
Yeah. If, if it's going to come back as a discussion item, are there any policy statements around how we allocate, who we allocate and how much of our budget we allocate towards these different community partners? Either that the mayor's office uses or that the safety and services group uses and they evaluate?
So we, the mayor's office does have some criterion that it uses in doing the evaluation of who the funders were and that's including the application and we can submit a copy of the application to you. In terms of the amount, there isn't a percentage amount that is, says, you know, X amount of funds like we do for human services where it's $10 per capita is the goal that we have. We don't, we don't have a similar goal for these. The only requirement that we've been using is that they're annual operating, the city's contribution can't exceed 50% of the operating budget.
Their contribution for operational purposes can't exceed 50% of their operational budget.
That's right.
And to, I want to try to answer the second, one part of your question. I don't believe, I just did a quick scan, I don't believe we have in, in the financial policies, specific reference to nonprofit.
And I was going to say that, that oftentimes, over the past years, we have actually had a moment during deliberations where we went through these and had some discussion. Because there has been at times some lively discussion on a couple of these and we were not asked to make recommendations because the assumption was, I thought, that we were coming back to the full council for some, some discussion on this together. Pretty much everything you see there is fairly stable from previous years as far as dollar amounts and they're, what they are still doing, how they're operating. There was no big changes that I can see or remember of any one of these particular nonprofits that came before us.
Josh?
Thanks. So the 50% came out of a prior budget discussion, maybe three years ago or so. That's where that sort of policy came from in terms of how we fund. You know, this is, has always been a very specific list that I like to call the parade of nonprofits that we used to see and now that's going to committee. There is another list that I think used to be in the budget and I'm looking at page 4-32 and I think this is where it should be. It's under the human services line items and it's labeled as charges and services. And I remember in past years, there was always a list of other human services organizations, not these that are enumerated up here, but like a two-page list of organizations that we gave some undesigned contributions to. And this 714,400 is a mighty specific number. And so it leads me to believe maybe that's it. And if it is, I guess, one, could we see the list? And two, why is it such a huge increase?
So first off, the Human Services Commission is currently deliberating on all of the applications. The commission will be forthcoming. It wasn't, their list was not available for publication in the document because they're meeting October and November. The specific funding requests will come back to the council under a separate agenda bill for the 219,000. Included, of the 714,000 charges for services, that includes the, go to the next slide. So it's 219, and I'm just sort of going, 219 for-
291.
291.
Two, three, yeah. 291 for human services, 130,000 for the pass-through grant. Then there is 134,000 for the senior center. So that's three, four, five, six. And then there's some other miscellaneous costs like our contribution for liquor profit of 9,000. Our human services forum, that's a solid person.
Oh, yeah.
It's, so it's money for the human services forum, our dues, it's the, the Arch dues of around 40,000. So it's a whole bunch of smaller miscellaneous items that get you to that.
So can we get a breakdown then of that 714? If it's, if it's such a large list, because I'm trying to figure out why it's increased so significantly and maybe part of it has to do with a higher per capita amount? I, I don't know. I just, I look at 714,400 and you've given a breakdown of several items which sort of add up to three-quarters of 714, but I don't know what that breakdown is and I don't know why it's 160,000 higher than our estimated 2014.
Mr.?
It's-
It's the director of your sustainability, this wants to...
So it's the, it's the 130,000, remember, we've talked about that, that we have to record on our books now. It's that drug-free grant that we passed through to what had been the Isqal Community Network, and now it's the, been retitled the Healthy Youth Initiative. Then the other piece of this is council goal of $70,000. So what was affiliated with that?
So, okay. Yeah, just, I think a breakdown would be helpful, just for comparison's sake, especially with the undesigned contribution line item, the 291, because I don't remember what last year's budget called for, for the commission, in terms of what they were...
It was 288. And we gave it the 1% increase that we provided direction to all the other departments within the general fund. But we can give you the general category breakdown. That's readily available.
Nina?
Thank you. Back to this chart, the nonprofit funding chart. I made little notes when you said general fund on all of these. I didn't note what the Historical Society, 80,000, is that general fund?
Yes, general fund. This is for operations.
Because of operations. And then Mountains to Sound Greenway, same?
General fund, operations.
Okay. And then the question I had was Village Theater Capital, Capital Fund. And if I heard correctly, this is something we do every year. And when we have something like that, does that mean that they are restricted to spend it on capital improvements? Okay.
There was a presentation on that particular piece, and it was a capital issue. He spoke to new microphones for the Village.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
One, before we move off that particular slide to note, though the amount is the same, DIA had requested an increase of up to, they had actually requested 60,000 this year, and this funding recommendation from the administration is matching last year's. It's not giving them the, the request for 2015. Are we done?
Yeah, but may I respond to that there? There's the council goal this year, too, that goes to DIA that is new.
And that's where, did we, did we look at that last week, or are we going to look at that again? So...
Both.
We're going to look at that again.
Yeah. Just as a little asterisk there. Thank you.
Ready? Okay. Ultimate mark, here's your, here's your slide. So, we have 34 funds. So in summary, 10 funds are ending their fund balance. They're increasing from 2014 to 2015. We have eight funds where the balance is remaining exactly the same. We have seven funds that are decreasing by less than 100,000, in a very small dollar amount. We have three funds decreasing between 100 or 200,000, and we have one fund where we're transferring the funds to the Park Improvement Fund, and then we'll be coming back to council to close that fund. So then when we looked at sort of a materiality, we said, let's look at those funds where the fund balance is changing greater than 200,000, because that's really the more significant issues. And in that, we have these funds that are changing. The Capital Improvement Fund will be using a million dollars' worth of reserves, and a lot of that is due to our increased funding in the Capitol Street Overlay Program. The Park Improvement Fund, that's the largest portion out of that 10 million. 7.7 is anticipated to be spent using the bond funds, which would naturally flow through. The Water Operating Fund, typically what happens there is the revenue from our rates, a certain portion of it every year goes towards capital projects. In particular, the capital projects that we'll be talking about in the water utility. It's a very heavy program this coming year, and then next year, they're not anticipating as large of a program. So when I was looking at the overall funding in the water utility, I really didn't look at it in isolation. I looked at it over a couple of years from a cash flow perspective to make sure that we could manage the construction of those projects. And then the Stormwater Fund, it has had, and you will, you will see later on, particularly in the operating funds, we have in our financial policies some targets on two months of operating reserves for the water utility and the sewer utility. And the Stormwater Fund, we have one month reserve, and we'll show you later on the available cash for reinvestment in capital projects. So that's really the, looking at the bigger picture, the larger picture, it's really, when you look at that 10 million, you can see it's really comprised of just those five funds.
Thank you. That very much answered my question from last time.
And just for clarity's sake, so the Park Improvement Bond Fund, because we, those funds were put, those dollars were put in that fund after the sale of the bond last year, or in 2014?
Yes.
So they're, so they're new ending fund balance, 2014, and we expect to expend them in 2015?
Yes, and we'll be talking a little bit more about that fund. But the major project in that is the renovation and the upgrade of the pool. That's $5 million. We're planning on opening the pool in the middle of next year, so the majority of the money is going to be spent on one project, with some of the smaller projects to follow during the year.
Thank you.
Oh, can I ask a question?
Yes.
For the one fund transfer in cash and closing, there were two other funds, when you get back into the detail, that also look like they should be closing, and I was just wondering why they're not. Engineering Services Fund, it said was no longer needed, yet there was a balance sitting in there. And the new fire station, still had money in that as well. Why wouldn't they be closing, too?
The Engineering Fund, we're still doing some reconciliation and closeout from that fund. We're, it's a little bit more complex and just sort of having the available time. So the cash is sitting there until we can make a recommendation on truly who owns some of that money, and then do the dispersal. And the other one was the fire...
I think it's Fire Hall.
Fire Hall.
Fund for the Fire Hall.
We've just been holding on to that, sort of waiting to see what the future is. There's been some conversations about relocation, additions of additional fire station. And so we've just, the money is sitting there, waiting for an overall big picture. So it's restricted and protected, and so rather than transferring it to another fund, we've just left it residing there.
Josh?
On the Stormwater Capital Fund, one thing that caught my eye was the ending fund balance getting somewhat low in comparison to years past. And is that, what's the strategy for dealing with that? Is it just transfers in to be considered in the future?
You're jumping way ahead of us, but Sheldon's waiting to tell you all about it.
I saw Stormwater Capital.
Yeah, yeah. So this is sort of the big picture stuff. But we'll be getting into the detail of how we're at planning the mayor's proposed plan and use of those resources, so...
And then I guess to add to Mary Lou's comment about funds that are kind of sitting around, the Newport Way Construction Fund was another one that, is that being saved for the three circles? Or is that what it's being saved for? Or can that money be used for other transportation projects? It has to be literally Newport Way?
My understanding is that this is some transportation-related bonds, and so as long as it met the definition of transportation, it could be reprogrammed. Previous councils, we had some conversations, I believe, last year, and there was a desire to use some of that funding on Sunset in Newport.
Somewhere else.
I'm geographically challenged, so I'm sort of trying to...
So I would just throw it out there that if there's transportation money sitting there, and we're not planning to do a project on Newport, I mean, that amount, I don't remember what it was, but it wasn't, it wasn't a whole lot of money. It was maybe less than 200,000, you know. I mean, obviously, when that project occurs on Newport, it's going to cost a lot more than what's in that fund. So if that money, we could consider repurposing it, whether it's for some of those other complete streets types projects that, you know, aren't in this budget, or some other transportation project on our priority list. I don't know if we're going to do a category of, you know, pluses and minuses for deliberations like we did last year, but that would be one of those I would want to put on the list as a potential shift in funds.
So I believe the question's been noted, and I think the question is, what are our options with using the monies in the Newport Way Fund? Any other questions? All right.
Special revenue funds, those are funds that we account for, where the revenue is restricted for a designated purpose. It's different than an enterprise fund, that is more of a business-like activity. So in the street fund, the majority of its funding comes from the general fund through a transfer. This coming year, of the 3.7 million, 2.4 million will be an operating transfer from the general fund. The overall increase in the budget from 2014 to 2015 is about a 2.5% increase. When we did, went in and did some analysis, first off, it does not include funding for Route 200 Fairbox. At the time of the development of the budget, it was our understanding that Metro would be eliminating that route. Subsequent to the publication, we came to understand that that was not their intent coming forward next year. So we'll be looking to the future on that particular project. Also included is a request from the Talis community to pay for their streetlights. We currently pay for the Isqal Highlands. The estimate from Public Works' operation is, this is an additional commitment of $35,000, so that funding has been included. And also, it's a pass-through or an in-and-out. We have a grant for an emergency trailer. At the time, we just received notification that we had in fact received this grant. You'll be getting some legislative action before the end of the year for the acceptance of the grant, and the 18,000, so we budgeted both the revenue and the expenditures. So when you sort of step back, and if you looked at, if nothing had changed without these new additional fundings, the overall change is about 5,500 in the budget exclusive of the metro route. So it's really, it's pretty, this fund is really about our operations, our maintenance, road projects, you know, street sweeping, snow removal. It's truly the operations, and it's really the work that Brett Heath and his folks do. There's some work that is part of engineering services, like the development of the Transportation Improvement Plan. That is not capital in nature, it's a plan. So some of those costs of those employees that are doing work in that are also charged there. So, once again, really, besides these items, there really are no new initiatives. It's pretty much maintenance as usual.
Question, Mary Lou?
A couple ones on this one. So Talis is a new neighborhood. Why doesn't it have enough streetlights? Why is the city going back to streetlights?
Actually, we have a, so we have an obligation to pay for the streetlights throughout, you know, the city. They're part of the city's streetlights. These aren't new, it's just to pay for the electricity affiliated with lighting the lights.
So it's an annual cost?
It's an annual cost going forward, and, you know, it's, what typically happens is that at some point, they get transferred to the city, and they just hadn't been transferred to the city yet, so now they are.
Okay, and a couple more questions. Diana, the budget document, section 5.3, it kind of sounds like we're spending, we're matching something with that $18,000 grant. It's on page 5-4, it looks like it's an expense for us, a capital outlay, so...
Because it's a grant, you budget the money in...
Oh, you put it in and out?
Yeah.
So that is the total cost?
You can't, in governmental budgeting and accounting, you cannot net revenues against the expenditures when it's a pass-through, so you have to gross up from accounting perspective.
So that is the total cost?
Yeah.
And then, just looking at the detail you put in the revenue comparison, why is the beginning fund balance in 2015 so low to start compared to the previous years? The previous years were all over a million, and now we're starting with 676. Did we have some bigger expenditures this year that brought that down?
No, what we did was, we did include as much of an operating transfer from the general fund. That dollar amount was more like 1.9 million, if you recall from one of our previous slides. We had indicated around 480,000 was additional funding that we needed to provide to the Street Operating Fund, because we had been using pretty much one-time money. So when you look at the long term, the new funding requirement is more reflective in the future of the need of that operation.
I have a question. I want to go back to the first question, Mary Lou's first question regarding Talis' streetlights. Bob, I think you said we have an obligation. Do we own those lights? Is this part of this, I believe, isn't, aren't the ownership divided between the utility and the city, throughout the city? And is, why, why is there an obligation? Because I know, just for point of comparison, I happen to live on a street where the city doesn't pay the light. The bill comes around to all those homeowners every once in a while. I'm just, I didn't know that we had an obligation.
So I think Emily can write that question down, and we'll get you an answer at the next meeting.
It's really a matter of equity, because every place else in the city, we pay in the community, whether it's residential or commercial, we pay for the existing streetlights. So upon annexation, it wasn't up until recently that they made the request. So it's very typical when you do an annexation. Part of that annexation in getting an urban level of service versus a rural level of service is that cities typically take on the obligation. So it's a matter of fairness. If we don't do them, then we, should we not do everybody else?
Right, so I just assume that somehow the fees Talis homeowners threw, some other fee were paying for this, for their lights. I'm looking at Josh, because he knows his tax bill in detail.
I don't. I know our fees go to a lot of other things. Apparently not, not your street, though. It's not covered in the lighting, lighting program.
Yeah, I think the bigger question is there. I just happen to know about my street. But is, is, I mean, Bob, you said there was an obligation, and you just gave more of a, of an explanation. We certainly are silent in terms of policies on that, but it's good to know what the practice has been and why.
Can I just ask, you know, this is 35,000, it's being called out as a line item because it's new, new funding, which I think maybe led to the question of whether this was a one-time or recurring expense, because it's sort of odd with a recurring expense to call it out as a line item when it's a utility payment. I mean, in future budgets, is this going to get subsumed somewhere? You know, I mean, we don't call out the Highlands' street lighting in a separate line item. I guess there's an obligation to light the Highlands, but maybe not Talis.
Yeah, I mean, we're paying for those as well, and the whole reason was simply because it was a new expense. So we wanted a call to your attention that was, was new spending that hadn't been there in the previous year.
Where do those expenses usually show up in the budget for, like, lighting, utility payments, that sort of thing? Do they just come out of a specific fund, or are they general fund?
It comes out of the street fund operating.
Just always out of the street fund, okay.
And if you look at 5-4, it's included in charges and services of the 1.2 million. So a good portion of that's for street lighting.
It seems like that number goes up, or has gone up, year by year. Have we looked at ways to bring the cost, if you said a good portion of it is street lighting, are there ways to bring the cost down, like using a different type of lighting, or something that's more energy efficient, or, I mean, I know even in some cities around the country, there's lighting that doesn't activate until there's a vehicle nearby, so you're saving a lot of costs.
So we have, we have been installing LED lighting. You may remember that presentation that got done by the Ops Crews about two years ago, which, you may, they did, which showed a pretty significant savings on an annual basis. But, you know, what we could do, Sheldon is here tonight to talk about more of the kind of infrastructure improvements as an operating issue, which is Brett's department, and he's not here tonight. So we can either, you know... So we can either, you know, answer a question if there's a more detailed question on it. I know on your question, Paul, there was an issue of ownership, and we can get that defined, but that's generally where it's going to come from.
Nina?
Little question. On page 5.4 in the expenditure comparison, what are operating transfers out? What does that mean? It's in here somewhere, I just can't find it.
Operating transfers out of 60,000 is the street operating fund support of work that the sustainability fund does in relation to street-related activities.
Thank you.
So an operating transfer in, a definition of an operating transfer is money that is passing back and forth between one of each other, between one of the 34 funds. So it's money being sent back and forth.
Mary Lou?
Just a general question on ending fund balances. When I took a quick peek at our policies, it looked like on some of them, limited maybe to three, we actually do have some numbers, like, we should be between 8 and 15%, et cetera, on three of them. But for most of these funds, it doesn't seem like we've got any hard and fast policy, or any need to have a hard and fast policy of whether an ending fund balance is this, that, or whatever.
So typically, in particular, the general fund, is because its revenue is so variable, because you get, the largest portion, you get your property taxes in April and in October, so it generally shows up to us in May and November. So to prevent unusual bow waves, in particular, you create a fund balance policy for those funds. Then we have ones for the three utilities, because we have outstanding debt, and it is good when you're looking at issuing revenue bonds to have established policies. There are two funds that will be bringing forward some recommendations in an update to the financial policies that are part of our internal service funds. Typically, there is no requirement, there is no accounting philosophy, there's no accounting guru that has a recommendation on the other funds, because typically, their revenue stream is consistent month to month. And so it's just a matter of what is your desire for ending fund balance, or do you want to be able to spend it on programs, or do you want to build up reserves? So we'll be talking like the municipal arts fund. You'll see their ending fund balance going up, number one. One, as a result of substantial activity in the community, but secondly, the commission is having some desires to buy some larger, more expensive pieces instead of buying these smaller ones. So it's hard to establish a philosophical approach to say, you know, you only can have 1/12 of the revenue you get in any one month, because they may, the council as well as the commission may have different objectives.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. That was, you know, we went over this last year, but I found that very helpful, to hear it again, anyway. Thank you. All right, we can continue.
Okay. Next one, the community sustainability fund. They have a number of programs that they are taking on this coming year. They receive the majority of their funding from an administrative fee from our solid waste hauler. We also provide some inter-fund transfers from the sewer, the waters, from the street operating fund, water, sewer, and storm, in support of programs that are in relationship to those utilities that are of a sustainability nature. So some of the programs they're looking on taking on is business technical assistance and outreach for food packaging. There's 15,000. They want to, oh, I didn't change my one word, I got it, I love the word wasted, don't ask me why, I had it on both words, but it's food waste prevention, food to good to waste. Then they'll be doing some work on sustainable landscaping outreach and education. They are going to continue to work with King County in the commute trip reduction initiative. They're going to be supporting the council goal on a safe and drug-free community. If you recall, we have set $70,000 aside for that council goal in the general fund, but overall sustainability is the manager of it, but the funding is really general fund funding. They want to do a review of their programs and make sure that the programs and the services, you know, one of the things that often happens is, once we establish a program in government, it's one of those programs that lives on and on and on. So they want to step back, do a reflection of what are the things that, what's their mission, what things, looking out into the future, should they be, you know, focusing in on? And then internally, they're going to be working with the departments on lean continuous improvement. And we have Dave Fujimoto here, if you really want any specifics about any of his programs.
Aline?
A couple of questions on 512. So the first one is, under the expenditure comparison on the personnel, from 2014 to 2015, there's almost 173,000 additional, and I'm not seeing any personnel, staff additions.
If you look on 512, their budget for personnel was 690,000, their estimate was 578,000, and their proposed is 692. If you look at the 2014 budget as compared to the 2015 budget, what that is, is full-strength staffing. During 2014, they had a vacancy that they didn't fill until August. So they had some one-time savings in the delay of filling the position.
Okay.
So when you compare the budget, the incremental increase is budgeted at full staffing, they're now at full staffing strength, so we would expect that 692,000 for next year.
Okay, and one other charge, under revenue comparison, charge for services. Again, the 2014 estimate versus the 2015 budget is about 80,000 difference, what's that from?
There is a proposal in front of council currently, an agenda bill, that is looking to increase the amount of the administrative fee in order to continue to pay for the related programs.
Could you rephrase that? Or tie, I'm not sure.
So there's a?
What administrative fee and what related program?
Well, there's an administrative fee in the Clean Scapes contract, so it's a fixed, yeah, it's a fixed amount, and then this is the amendment that would come forward for next year. As part of that, the amendment incorporates two pieces. One is a CPI adjustment, and the other is an adjustment in the administrative fee. And those go for paying for sustainability programs. So we anticipate, there's been some adjustment, I think, in how sustainability's been getting funded, particularly from some of the other utility funds, as we try to rebalance the programs to where the benefit is actually affiliated.
There's more details, but now I think I got it.
I wasn't, are they, what's their new name?
Recology.
See, I couldn't, I couldn't remember their new name. I, you know, I knew it wasn't Clean Scapes, so that's why I said, yeah.
I do have one other question, I think we're done? Okay. I have one other question. I remember last year-ish, we implemented this voluntary contribution on the Clean Scapes recology bill, and we were going to set up some kind of separate fund from all these nickels and dollars that we hope to collect, and I just wanted to know if, is there actual money in that fund? And if there is, is there some placeholder for that? How's that fund going? Do you remember that? Oh, do you remember that? I remember that. Yeah, right, the on-bill contribution. Right.
So there was, there's something that was set up, which is a community sustainability fund, and it's set up as a sub-account, and I don't know the exact dollars, but they're small, probably less than $1,000. We did take a look at combining that with some mitigation, well, I don't know, mitigation money, but there's some money that came from a settlement with Puget Sun Energy that was intended to help to support that. The program hasn't launched, in part because it would be a good complement to something like a neighborhood program, where essentially, the idea was to engage the community in sustainability projects and to leverage either volunteer capacity or programs that the neighborhoods would, or districts would want to engage in. So we've held off on launching that program, but there's not a huge pot of money in reserves, but that's part of what we want to reprogram as we think about. Diane mentioned the program review, and part of that is looking at our overall program mix, what are the goals for the community, making sure we're resetting on those things, and that could be one of those pieces that ties in and helps to reinforce those programs.
So it's so small, it's not mentioned in here?
It's not reflected here.
And what we do is, at the end of each year, we break it out into a designation of what we would call operating cash and restricted cash, so that we could track that contribution. So from an accounting perspective, there's internal controls to manage that portion of that fund.
Do we have any way of knowing, there's a very small percentage of sales tax that we get on every paper bag that's sold in the city? There's no way to track that?
No, we attempted to do that when it was brought forward, and there was just, because of how they report, the business just simply reports sales tax at X. And when you have a big box that's doing both, it's pretty, you know, pretty hard to figure out.
Okay. Please. Are we ready?
Just a general comment. I like the slides and how they, you know, summarize things. I see you do have the references to the budget pages as well. There's a little bit of work going back and forth.
If you have any suggestions, I mean, we could just work off of the budget document, but some of this, what we're trying to do is to share with the council, those either the program initiatives or the changes, without getting into all of the detail in the budget document.
Yeah, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, it's not easy to correlate the two, I understand. Cemetery fund, really, this is a fund that is used to do, manage the, the maintenance of the cemetery, as well as very, very, very slowly build up reserves for an eventual endowment fund for when the cemetery is closed to pay for the ongoing maintenance. In 2014, we increased the maintenance fees, and on average, the council approved this action earlier this year. On average, they increased the fees around $50 for the various maintenance services associated with a burial. The fees for the niches in the graves have not been increased since 2009. When we have an opportunity, one of the things that we have seen and done in other communities is, part of this is building up sufficient reserves, so that the general fund in 20, 30 years from now, isn't the one that has the long-term obligation for the overall maintenance of the cemetery when it has been completely subscribed out. So what we will bring back, you know, and I don't know, I doubt if that'll be something that we do in 2015, because we, finance has their hands full with the MUNIS implementation. I just, you know, typically, I've seen some other cities that have a very active cemetery, where that balance is more about a million dollars, and then what you do is you invest it, use those investment proceeds for the operation of the maintenance when it is completely built out. And you can also use it to do some capital expansion. So we, I've got some experience with them, but we just haven't, there's sort of like not enough hours in the day to bring forth some new recommendations. The municipal art fund, that is, the funding of that is our admissions tax. With the opening of the new theater, we've seen a significant increase in our revenue. We're anticipating 187% increase to 200,000. Once again, like the Human Services Commission, the Arts Commission will make recommendations on how those grants should be awarded. At the top, they are meeting in November and December, and then the recommendations would come to council in 2015. I've had some conversation with the staff liaison, we're going to try to move that schedule up to the summertime, so that you could then get the preview through the budget document on what those recommendations are. There's also a recommendation, the Arts Commission met, and with the public art component at the skate park, and as well as the pool, there was a desire to add some additional capital dollars to what is already in the existing budgets and to enhance what they're already, what is being designed in those two projects. And then the larger one is to develop a five-year strategic plan for arts funding and programming, as well as a maintenance program for existing art. How do we, once we acquire an art, it's really, like so many things, it's really important to maintain that art in its, in the best condition.
I thought I recall that we, that there used to be a policy of retaining some percentage of capital project for art, so this is in addition to that?
Yes.
And, and, so I'm just curious why, why we would want to add more? What's the thinking behind that?
What's your question specifically?
So is, so is this the one-half of 1%? Or is this plus 40,000?
Yeah, so there's a, so we have a policy related to capital projects, so whenever we do a capital project, there's one-half of 1% of that total project that is dedicated to public art affiliated with that project. And then the second one is just, the municipal art fund was set up as a separate fund, and it has a dedicated revenue source, of which the tax from that revenue source goes into that art fund, and it's, right now, council's restricted the use of those funds to simply art. And if I recall, is that the ticket tax that's affiliated with them?
Emissions tax.
The emissions tax. So we have a new theater, which generated a significant amount of new revenue to that fund that typically wasn't there. Now, I think there is some discretion that the council may have in terms of how much it chooses to, what the percentage is that it chooses to use for the arts fund. But, you know, obviously, the Arts Commission's been kind of looking forward to this, and they're looking at expanding their arts and culture programming, they just haven't been able to fully put it into place. I think they're anticipating that for the upcoming year.
And so this is, the $40,000 is what the Arts Commission would be looking at, and there's some indication that they're looking at using that at the skate park and the pool.
Right, so when the, when Parks and Recreation was looking at the design of those two particular projects, they work cooperatively and closely with Amy Dukes, who is the individual assigned to supporting the Arts Commission. When they looked at what money was available and the design, there was a desire to enhance the art component, and so therefore, there's this recommendation that this enhancement to make something that more met the desires on the art side versus the available funding on the construction side, there was this desire to add this small additional funding.
Okay, thanks.
This five-year strategic plan seems like it would be a great place to maybe consider the type of public participation in the arts that I had brought up at our retreat this past year, and finding ways as part of a strategic plan to do that, whether it's through, like, the competition-type thing I had suggested, or some other models. Is that plan something that the council will be able to provide input on, or is it strictly coming out of the Arts Commission as a commission-level adopted policy?
That will be something, I'm not exactly sure where the authority on that particular strategic plan. I'm assuming it would come forward to the council, but we can seek clarification and get back to you.
Because that, that piece that I talked about, the retreat, you know, seems like putting it in this sort of context might be better suited. We talked about it not being, per se, a goal, but maybe something that would be more of a planning idea.
Absolutely.
One thing I would like to add is that it's only $5,000, but the earmark for Art East is for funding of their community arts director and the programs that they, art programs. Then there is quite a list of community-based art programs that they run throughout the year, over the course of the year. So that is one way that existing city funds are going to exactly what I know, what you just mentioned earlier, as, as art events engaging the public. And one way that we're helping to support that is through our support for Art East.
Okay.
Mary Lou?
Just a clarification, Diane. So even on our own projects, the pool and the skate park, we, one half of 1% of those budgets is set aside for art, and this is an additional amount to add to that percentage.
Correct.
So spending a little more money on the art at our own facilities.
Yes, okay. Isn't it only on public projects?
Yes. And I'm sorry, I kind of think I kind of swung and missed at your earlier question and gave you a lot more information than needed. But the limit, you know, it's not necessarily a cap, but it's a limit in terms of the minimum amount that would be utilized for a project on, on a specific capital project. So the Arts Commission ended up having some discretionary funds like they do right here, and decided to add some additional funds to that. They have, you know, the discretion to do that.
And it's one half of 1% up to $5 million. So anything over $5 million doesn't qualify for the one half of 1%?
Just public projects.
Mm-hmm.
Hold, Nina?
Come on. On the anticipated revenue increase, this is all from that capital projects funding that we were just talking about, the 300,000?
So last year, we budgeted 160. With the opening of the new theaters, we're seeing around 317,000, and we're proposing 300 for next year. The reason for the reduction is when the theaters in particular opened up, there was sort of like high community participation in those initial months with everybody going. And now what we've seen, now that it's sort of fallen off into a normal routine, we've backed off that revenue number a little bit.
Thanks.
Josh?
Is there a policy at all, or maybe it falls back to the strategic plan, about what types of art the funds get spent on, or, you know, it's just, there's some things around town that I look at and I go, what does that really have to do with Issaquah or, you know, our community? I mean, they're nice installations, but how does that get, I mean, the commission obviously decides what will get purchased, but is, are there, is there guidance?
The commission does pretty much, through their process, decide what they fund. And you have to forget that art is in the eye of the beholder. What you really love, another one of us sitting at this table may really think it's, it's an unnecessary piece of art, if you even want to call it art sometimes. So it really truly is within, it always has been, unless you want to change it. I mean, I sat on the Arts Commission for many years, and it was at our discretion. And there was a great debate, and some of the pieces were, you know, a bit unusual, but it is art. But they also bring in a lot of pieces that they don't necessarily buy, that are brought here for, the artist would just like to have it out of their facility for a while, so they bring it for us to, and we have purchased some of those over the course of the year because they have been popular pieces of art.
And my comment isn't on whether you would consider it art or, you know, in terms of the eye of the beholder, it's just a matter of what's the connection to the community? In other words, is there some statement by buying a particular piece or installation that says, we want this in Issaquah because this somehow fits in with our community versus it's just a nice piece of art? Is there any guiding principle that says, you know, here's some criteria?
You're reaching for your mic.
Well, it's the, I think the Arts Commission would say that everything they buy is connected to the community in some way. You know, obviously, there was one that they decided to pass on earlier this year that they didn't feel that way. But if you like, we could pose that question and submit it to the Arts Commission, and they can provide an answer to you in terms of how they choose art and their connection to the community.
Their process, that would probably be interesting.
Let me just, I mean, I'm not looking for metrics, and I'm not looking for, you know, rules.
And is the maintenance programming as well as maintenance, I always, I thought they had a maintenance program already. It must be an enhancement or redo, bringing it up to date, I'm not sure, because I thought they had a maintenance program.
They've been talking about it for the last year or so, but they haven't really been able to fully develop it, and they haven't determined how much funding should be set aside out of the total at this point in time.
And the recommendations from the Arts Commission, right?
Okay.
Okay, so, because some of the biggest controversies have been around art here.
They're heavy, yes.
Okay, moving right along.
Yep.
Communications Fund, AKA our cable TV. The funding for this comes from franchise fees. This fund, it was, in the budget development, was really consistent with what we budgeted last year. It's primarily salaries and, including part-time. We had a conversation with whether or not they needed that same level of part-time, but given the, particularly with the Comprehensive Plan Amendment coming up, there was a recognition that we'll be using a lot of part-time non-regulars for programming, given the number of meetings that this council will probably be needing to discuss the update to the Comprehensive Plan. That's probably about the most important thing I can share out of this fund, because it's pretty much an operating fund that does our filming and broadcasting. The Lodging Tax Fund, the increased revenue and expenditures, we are increasing it by an estimate of around 20%. The actual dollar increase is 25,000. Part of it is due to the anticipated opening of a new hotel, so there'll be some additional funding available. It's assuming that it won't open up until late 2015, so we haven't really increased the revenue significantly, given the projected opening. Once again, we don't have any detail for that 125,000. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee is meeting tomorrow to have their first meeting to discuss their award program, and then once that's decided, that will come back to the council for consideration.
My question.
In the prior year achievements, the second bullet said, leveraged 92,000 of city tourism money with approximately 643,000 from other funding sources. Where does that happen? Who does that within the city? What department, who owns that?
Economic Development works with the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee.
Okay. Thank you.
We're changing into capital projects. I don't know if you want to take a short break, or if you want to continue going through. So that, I guess that leaves us with the special revenue funds, so that's probably another five or six funds out of our, so we've done about seven out of 34. We'll get through the rest of them, because a whole bunch of them just have the same ending cash balance, but I don't know if you want to take a quick break.
Do we need a break?
Sure, just a little.
Okay, when the big hand is on the five.
On that clock.
Five-minute break until 25 after. Seconds. Okay, so let's get started. Mary Beth, we're ready to get started?
Yeah, sure.
Beth Anne, excuse me. Beth, Beth, Beth. May I call you Beth?
Yes, just the Mary Beth Huffle.
Okay, so we're going to be moving into the Capital Improvement Fund. This is where we have really a lot of the activity that is beyond our operations, and it's really philosophically about the opportunities for council to have input into the various projects and kind of see those things that physically make a difference to the community. You know, sort of like finance, finance is finance, and it's, we're not pretty, you know, we're not glossy or anything like that. But, you know, capital improvements is where those things where you can see the impact and the differences as elected officials you can make to this community. So we have a Capital Improvement Fund. We had some discussions last year. This is really kind of a quasi-capital improvement and quasi-special projects long-term. When you look at the history of this fund, it also includes a lot of one-time money. Where the general fund, we've been able to isolate it over years because we've peeled off some of our sales tax. It is those things that are in relationship to one-time projects. Where the sales tax in the general fund is to support the ongoing operations of activities in the general fund. So you'll see that sales tax is estimated to be 2.6 million. It's approximately the same as what we're anticipating for this year, because we're just not really seeing the growth we had anticipated. REIT 1, we're anticipating at 1.2 billion. We're seeing some strength right now at 1.5 million. This number could increase over, in 2015. The money is restricted under state law for those publicly-owned facilities that are capital improvement. So that fund, that even when the money comes in, it goes for a particular purpose related to publicly-owned construction projects, so it's not something that would be used for a study.
Question about revenue. In the opening paragraph on that page, it says, primary revenue sources are 1/4% excise tax on real estate sales?
Sales tax.
Excise tax.
That's REIT, Real Estate Excise Tax.
Okay, Mary, thank you.
Sorry.
A follow-up on that, it says, that's by council?
Hold on, hold on, just a minute. Yeah, I was wondering if that was a misspelling of R-E-I-T, and I think, no, that couldn't be. There's something else going on here.
It should be Real Estate Excise Tax.
Yes, thank you.
So.
Go ahead.
It says, by council policy. So is this, the use of the 0.25% excise tax, that's not specifically stated in our financial policies?
No, it is not. Under state law, communities that plan under the Growth Management-
Excuse me, I'm sorry. That wasn't captured on the mic. Could you restate your question?
Where it states there's 0.25% excise tax dedicated to this fund by council policy, that's not actually specifically stated in our financial policies, correct?
No. My understanding, it was a long ago policy of the council. We could move that as an addition. That's a great suggestion to include it in our policies. A little bit about real estate excise tax, because there's really two pieces. There's the first quarter percent, it's for those communities that plan under the Growth Management Act. So it's typically those cities in western Washington in the urban core area. And then council is allowed to adopt the second quarter percent. So you have a half of a percent that can, that comes from transactions related to real estate excise tax. So the state law is very specific on how you can use the first quarter percent and the second quarter percent. Second quarter percent has a slightly more restrictive on usage of the fund. That second quarter percent goes to the Street Improvement Fund. The first quarter percent can, is a little more global. You can use it on Parks and Recreation, you can use it on maintenance, until such, I think it gets sunsetted in 2016. So the list we have, because this is a restricted revenue source, we watch how that money is used to ensure it's in compliance with state law. So typically, it's related to the overlay program and then any other construction projects, and then we sort of, we track from an accounting perspective the cash balance, what portion is related to other revenue sources versus REIT.
So what do you mean it sunsets in 2016?
That previously, for a period of time, particularly during the recession, the state legislators provided local governments with the ability to use some real estate excise tax money on maintenance. Prior to the Great Recession, it truly could only be used for rehab, rehabilitation- Prior to the Great Recession, it truly could only be used for rehab, rehabilitation. It couldn't be used for repair. It could be used for repair, but it couldn't be used for maintenance. So they sunset the, it's, it'll be up for consideration in 2016. So you can see the majority of our revenue is from sales tax. And then in prior councils, you know, sort of it, we, part of it is just sort of following the philosophy that we have seen in the budget documents. But it appears that there was a conversation when streamlined sales tax mitigation came in, the then council also said that we want to take some of that money and designate it to the capital improvement fund. So that would go back around 2000, I can't remember the date, mid 2000s.
Question, Tola?
My question is, are we taking into account likely reductions in revenues from the McCleary Legislature this year?
Because we don't know the impacts we have shared with the council, there are certain revenues that potentially could be at risk. But in, but what we're really doing, and you'll hear a little bit about it when we present the lobbying agenda for 2015. We've already had, because there are different revenue sources, but the one that is most at risk is called state shared revenue or entitlements. And that includes our streamlined sales tax. It includes our liquor profits, liquor excise tax. So there is a variety of revenue that the state has, both previous state legislators have shared with local government. Understanding the McCleary decision, we have already began having conversations with the state, and there's a coalition of cities, about the importance of maintaining that revenue stream so that we can continue to provide our services level. So it's one of those things where we really need, we're trying to definitely demonstrate the case that we need those existing ongoing revenues. So until such time as the legislator meets and looks at solutions, we're sort of in a reactionary mode.
So we have not dialed back the revenues in any of those streams you just mentioned in anticipation?
No.
Can we approximately quantify what we're talking about if all of those revenue streams were to disappear?
I would, the number's probably pushing a million dollars.
Thank you.
Thanks. Directly to that, when would, if that happened, does that happen in 2015 or 2016? Remind me how the state-
It depends, you know, the state legislator will be building their budget for the 2015-2017 biennium. So a lot just depends on what conversations they're having.
So I want to just suggest we take a moment and let the $1 million number sink in.
Yeah.
Bob?
Well, the only comment, you know, on that is we had to balance the potential, which we don't know how the legislature is eventually going to choose to balance the budget, versus the reality of providing services and what a million dollars means. And given the fund balance that we've got built in, we have a contingency essentially built into the budget, which is using the ending fund balance if we have to for that year without cutting services during that time. So if the worst-case scenario does happen, we do have a, you know, backup built into the budget to be able to balance the budget and then make the adjustments going forward into the 2016 budget. Or if we have to make adjustments next year, we can do mid-year adjustments as well.
All right, thank you.
I'll just, I just want to close out a thought and just point out that a lot of those things, like my understanding is streamlined sales tax mitigation, that's not just like a gift that the state gave us, right? It's because they changed policy and this was a promise that they made to municipalities as, you know, as they were, as their, as their actions took monies away from us. So people out there in the audience shouldn't think that we're, you know, somehow wanting to keep some gift that we were getting from the state legislature. This was part of a, these are all funds that were as a result of equity that was hammered out between the state and the municipalities. And it would be a real violation of those agreements if they cut them.
And as a, as a result, you know, you triggered my mind. It was in 2008 and that, at that time, that was the loss of revenue we sustained as a result in the change of a transaction being point of sale versus point of destination. Thank you. Okay. So we also have around 113,000, that is rental of some of our commercial property. We actually have two types in the general fund. We have rental of our houses that goes into the general fund and then commercial property, previous councils have designated this into this fund. And then we're rebudgeting 150,000 from the mitigation fund that we budgeted. It's actually 2014, not 2012. That is for the skate park because we are not spending the money in 2014. We'll be spending the money in 2015. So it's just bringing that, we won't bring the revenue in this year, we'll bring it in next year. That's the revenue side. On the expenditure side-
Excuse me? I'm sorry, before you move past that. You said skate park, I got my attention. It's a revenue source, but it's, it's a, is it not just a transfer?
Yes. It's a transfer in of 150,000 from the mitigation fund.
Right, okay. So as opposed to, okay. I found that, I don't know, it might be more clear if it was said transfer in or something like that. In the, in the budget document, it says other revenue sources.
Okay. So the street overlay, for 2014, we budgeted 390,000 in having conversation with Public Works Operations because they were asked not to do a lot of their projects until salmon days. They weren't sure how many, how much of it was going to be done this year. So to the degree, we're rebudgeting 380 out of the 390. It could be we end up actually using less because I've been seeing some projects around town and the weather has been holding out for them to do some work. But originally, it was anticipated that we really would not be able to do a lot of our projects. So we re-appropriated 380,000. Also, one of the major council agendas, particularly in the Transportation Improvement Fund, was to commit to some funding for the overlay program. So we are meeting that council desire of funding 800,000. That results in that ending fund balance dropping down because we're doing, you know, more than a doubling of our investment in the overlay program. The skate park, the project overall is, originally, it was budgeted at 350,000. Then there was some conversation, there is a preferred design. And then based upon community input, the recommendation is to go ahead and since this is, and add the additional 150,000 for the preferred design, taking the total project to 500,000. The difference between the 500 and the 425,000 is money that we, the 75,000 is what we anticipate spending this year in design and community input and working with people in the community. Some of the revenue sources really carry, as I indicated earlier, our Real Estate Excise Tax for 2014 was budgeted at 1.2. We're currently at 1.5. So the administration's recommendation is to use some of that money to do the community design and the desire.
Tola?
So how much did we, for street overlay last year, how much did we budget? And if we couldn't spend all that in one year, can we spend 1.2 million dollars this year?
So we budgeted 390. We have a current contract with a company, I think it's Lakeside, that is doing the work. So we know we're going to, we're basically saying the money is sitting in 2014. So that money that is not used, we want to carry forward and continue the work that we had desired in 2014. And in addition, we want to add 800,000 for this year.
No, I totally get that.
Okay.
I'm just wondering how much, at the beginning of 2014, we had a budget that we were going to spend on street overlay. And whatever we actually spent, we, we were left at the end with 380 that we didn't spend, presumably because we couldn't spend it fast enough.
Yes.
And so my question is, how much did we actually spend? And can we, can we reasonably expect to be able to spend 1.2 million this upcoming year?
In working with Public Works Operations, they said yes, they could spend that. Because when we did our original request for proposals, the request for proposals came in around $450,000. And then they had to scope it back to the 390 budget. So we already know that there was some work that we were hoping to accomplish in 2014 that we weren't able to. So then you add the additional funding and there's sufficient projects that could fulfill that need. So we would just get going on the project a little bit earlier than we did this year.
I just, I remember the lean years where Josh was always hoping for something like 800,000 and because they were the lean years, we always had to make do with much less. And I remember last year, we had a good, healthy number and we have a good, healthy number again. And I hope we actually go out and do those streets. Because while we are in a position to be able to do them, because who knows if we will, when the lean years will come back again.
So the revenue source is particularly the REIT 1. So that's sort of the restricted money. So once again, if we, let's say, next year, we only spend 700,000 out of the 1.1 million, we could ring forward a recommendation that we carry that unspent balance into the 2016 plus add something for 2016. So the money is there and protected if that is what the council's desire is.
So I think Nina had a question, then Josh?
Well, I wonder if, I thought you might be asking it actually, so you kind of jumped to the skate park expenditure. It was of interest to me, the original budget amount, I recall being 350. And we said then, but why do you say 350? And we had a big, long discussion about it. So it seems kind of interesting to say, well, no, no, we'd like it to cost 500,000, which is considerably more. So I don't know what more to say about that at this time. And then I just need to understand better. I'll just keep listening about the ending fund balance and how that all works. I'm a little lost on that part. I'm going to ask Tola after the meeting about that.
Josh?
On the street overlay, you know, Tola mentioned the lean times. And I don't remember the exact figures, but I do seem to recall that even 800,000 is low for what Brett cautioned the council would be a sustainable level of street overlay and the accumulation of deferred maintenance. My recollection, and this has been a couple of years since we had a committee presentation on it, but I recall it was somewhere north of a million on a yearly basis that would keep us on track for not accumulating deferred maintenance costs. And it became exponential over time. So the less we do now, the worse it's going to get in the future, especially if we add more miles of roadway, which, you know, with increasing lanes and adding more roads in the city, we will eventually do. So I wouldn't necessarily call this the good times for that budget either. I don't think we're really there and I don't think Brett would say we're really there. So that's one potential funding, I guess, related issue. I don't know if it's, it's on the table for analyzing that or revisiting those numbers.
Well, I actually was going to follow up your comment with that same thing. I think I was actually on what was then called transportation when we had that presentation as a committee. And I, I would value, if not a presentation, just a report. And it was a very easy-to-digest report. I mean, Brett had a very good model for showing what level of investment he felt was necessary to sustain our road services and keeping a balance between, you know, sustaining them and then not at a level amount year over year and not falling farther and further behind the curve. I mean, there was, there's a definite model that they followed to do that. It was very informative. You know, I think, and I, to me, I put this in the category of these other things that are looming out there that may come get us in future years. You know, ADA compliance is another one.
So if I might offer up, maybe this could be something on a work program for 2016 because currently, the Public Works Operation is conducting a pavement management survey. So where they go in and they do a rating and a ranking of our existing infrastructure. It's not something at this point in time where we have enough information to consider putting into the 2015 budget because the study isn't completed. But definitely, I know, I suspect it's something they planned on bringing to the committee in 2016.
Well, that timing, yeah. If that's underway right now, then we want to see the information based upon those results. Yeah, absolutely.
That would be very helpful whenever that gets done. I do have to ask, how did we spend $10,000 on street overlay in 2014? Because you had said the budget was 390, but the carryover is 380.
Well, part of it is the, it is, it's just an estimate, you know? It's just budget dust. So what we-
$10,000 got paved into the street?
Well, part of it is some of the advertising and, you know, it's accumulation of some small fees, but the bigger one will be when we make payment on the contract. And part of it is the pavement management studies included in that 390. So I was sort of assuming, there's no magic. It was just sort of an estimate. It's, you know, because when you're doing the numbers in August and trying to estimate what it's going to be in December, you just sort of say, okay, here, this looks good.
I request that we get an official definition for budget dust. Any other? I did have one other comment about, in this area regarding the skate park. One of the elements of the original 350, there was some component of the 350, whether that was 25 or 50, I don't remember, which was for removal of the 50, that's what I would guess, removal of the existing one. I'm not sure the council has had kind of a full conversation about the current administration plan of using that 50 for the new park and not removing the existing park.
I haven't been aware of that, but I didn't think there was actually the wording that it was for the removal. Because there has been conversation for some time about maintaining that particular facility and going forward with the new one.
You know, I could look up the bill, but I have a high 90% recollection that it, the word remove is in the original consideration.
As the request here of the original bill, it was Director McGill said that it was 300,000 to build the new skate park and 50 to dismantle the existing park.
Yeah, yeah, so. I don't know, Bob, if you're ready now, but I think it would be good time for us to hear because we're all, it's here, the topic's on the table. I know the administration has a perspective on not removing the existing park. Could you share that with us?
Sure. Be happy to. So, so there's two components to this. One is, we went through a public process. At the end of that process, we had what we call the preferred design. And then there was a lesser design. And the preferred design ended up at that $500,000 number, which came back to us from the Parks Department. And the mayor felt, and the administration felt that it was a real benefit to try and get the park consistent with what the general public wanted. And these investments don't come along that often. You know, this is a 20, 25-year project and we felt that making that investment in the new park made a lot of sense. And then the second component was, your memory is very good, regarding the demolition of the old park. And so that was in the original agenda bill, was part of that provision at that time. And as we evaluated the existing park, there was, you know, there's been a lot of debate about whether or not the park was directly affiliated with some of the problems that we saw on the Rainier Trail and whether it was an attractive nuisance or not. And after a lot of thought and debate on that and the Rainier Trail getting kind of cleaned up through regular enforcement action and cleanup, that, that the skate park there does provide an asset to the community. And so the feeling was, there's still, there's still some viability and some potential return to the community of maintaining that skate park into the future. And so, you know, our recommendation back to the council at this point is that we would probably do some things to clean it up, so remove the fencing that's deteriorated. So remove the fencing that's deteriorated, make some improvements in the landscape that may be there, but that generally, the existing skateboard park would stay.
Okay. Josh?
So I just want to point out, I was looking back at my notes from May when we decided on the location. And, you know, at that time, I had pointed out that I personally, I think I was the only no vote on this, but I didn't support allocating funds for the skate park until we knew exactly what we were funding. And I made a comment at that time that I made note of saying, I assume at some point, we'll have a bid award to review to ensure the costs fall in line. And that we were fortunate that the estimate was falling just around the 350 mark, which is what the council approved for a budget. And I don't recall seeing anything between then and this other than coming forward saying, well, now we're just gonna go with a design based on quote-unquote "community input", which is now 150K above what the council approved. And it's being put into this budget, and it's hard to line item that out of the budget. It's like, if we approve the budget, it comes with the budget. So I don't know where that leaves us. I just want to point that out. Maybe this is an opportunity during our deliberations to consider that as a line item adjustment. But it just troubles me that 350 was approved, which I didn't really like in the first place because we didn't know what the scope would be, and now it's 500.
So there is not a, there is preliminary design. So there was really what was determined. So it's not final design yet, it hasn't gone out to bid. So based on the preliminary design, based on public input, that's where the new estimate came from. Obviously, before we got firm number, we'd have to get whatever the final bid proposals would be on that. But you certainly have the ability and authority as a council to make adjustments to the budget if you chose to. But I think the mayor felt strongly that there was a very significant public process involved with that. There is real support on this, and he wanted to meet with the defined needs of the community.
I guess what I don't understand is, when it was put in front of the council to decide on a preferred design and 350 was budgeted, at that time, we were told, this is the preferred design and the estimate is 350. And now it's sort of like, what is this other preferred design and what is this other community input? I know nothing about it.
If I may, my recol, actually, I don't think we've ever seen, truthfully, I don't think we've ever seen a preferred design. I think it was based upon the assessment of other parks and their costs. And we therefore think at a comparable 10,000 square feet, it should be here. So I don't think there's, we haven't seen the preferred design yet.
Yes, I'd agree.
And there was an extensive public policy that the Parks Board was involved with because that was the whole thing where people had an assumption of where they thought it would go. And there were a lot of opinions. And it was actually a pretty amazing, setting aside the question of how much to spend. The policy was interesting because the eventual place it was chosen, a lot of folks initially were skeptical, but in the end, turned out that they liked, which is of course across from the Park and Ride. Can I actually just go back just for a second?
So, and I just want to wrap up this one topic. So I'm not sure if we're keeping a list, but this may be an item that we'll be deliberating.
I have two comments.
Okay, wait, before you speak again.
Still on the skate park, two comments that I have. One, causes me to wonder if we need to look back at how we figure out what something might cost when we're trying to figure out, decide whether we're gonna do a project. Because I recall, it seemed like we'd done some research. And so I'm kind of hoping that we go back and figure out maybe how we could have done that better. And number two, if this is still an estimate, that concerns me. Because now it's 500, isn't gonna be 600.
Any other comments regarding the skate park? Naina?
My concern is that, is that how, when we did work on it quite a bit, and there were a great deal of assurances at being 350, and now we're discussing not using a portion of that budget for demolition. So there we go, we're freeing up some more funds. But the other is, is that this is $150,000 and I haven't seen everything else that's happening here. What am I taking it from in this case? It was said that there was extra revenue, but it can be spent. It's not a restricted fund that says you could only spend it on the skate park, right? So what am I not spending it on if I'm spending on skate park?
Go ahead, Bob.
So if you recall, this, you know, we can build a 300,000 dollar skateboard park. I mean, that's not an issue. I mean, we, it came down, actually, there was kind of a scramble towards the end because the skateboard park was not proposed as part of the Parks Bond. And so, but there was a real desire by the council to make a commitment that we rebuild that skateboard park. And 300,000 isn't a bad estimate. You know, I've previously built a skateboard park, it was 300,000. They researched other parks that were built at that same amount. You're gonna get some issues with, you know, location and that type of thing, that'll be a variable. But I think what we've said is, if the council really wants a 300,000 dollar skateboard park, we can deliver that at that design with that budget level. There was a, you're absolutely right regarding where the investment goes to. And what the mayor is saying in this budget, he's putting a priority on achieving that higher skateboard park that came out of that public process. He's recommended to you in his budget that we spend more than what the council previously had allocated to the project. And that's at his discretion, and the council may come back, as the council president already said, during deliberations and make a decision to change that allocation to something else. Or maybe cut the project completely. I mean, that's up to the council.
So I think I'll amend my previous comment. I think, because before any decision, I personally, I really would, you've heard me say this before, Bob. So sell me on it. Sell me on the extra 150. Why? What's the, what is, so you clearly, I mean, obviously, the mayor has seen something, but we haven't seen it. So if we can have that, I think that would be helpful to this process.
So we have a couple of options. We have a committee hall meeting coming up, workshop. Work session. And we have another budget session that we could come back to either one of those with the Rec Department, give you a presentation on exactly where we are with that, however you desire.
So perhaps, before we decide which, let's have a discussion about it in leadership. And maybe if we can just see a sketching of the points of justification, it'll be more clear what the more appropriate way of doing it is. Thank you. Okay, Tola?
I'm sorry, I just want to go back to, there was a question about the street overlay program. And so the newer council members may not know this, but when I started, the most junior member of the council had to take minutes. The council's own minutes. So, so I happen to have the 2010 minutes from the budget sessions. And what that tells me is, in 2010, the statement was, the maintenance level for street overlay was projected at the time as $750,000 a year. We were getting 200 of that. So this is why my statement of 800 feels good and 1.1 feels good. But anyhow, that was, that was how it was projected in 2010.
This bottle is half-empty.
But I think your point earlier was, are we gonna spend it?
Yeah, it was.
Because if we're not, yeah.
But there was a statement made that perhaps even 800 was not maintenance. And at least according to what we talked about in 2010, it definitely is.
So in terms of not accomplishing the original plan in 2014, I, correct me, Diana, I think I heard you say there were two things. First of all, there was an actual choice to defer some of the work based upon other events going around. And then the actual, we had to rebid it or re-scope it because the bids that came in were above budget. And so, and so those, the first one is a manageable factor. The second one isn't. But, oh, and the third reason you said, just starting earlier, which is maybe tied to the first, the first point. So I, when I heard, my takeaway from all of this is that, you know, when you've got, that the departments, the plan is, if these are the available funds in 2015, starting earlier is the first step toward assuring that we accomplish our goal in 2015.
And also, if you recall, we got a later start too because at that, and during the 2014 budget deliberations, there was even a conversation that we may not be able to do the overlay program because there was an assumption that we would be taking on the obligation of Kohani. So typically, when they would be pulling their documents and information, they were waiting for the annexation and the vote. So there was even some of that conversation at the council, the then council kind of recollects. So it just simply, I think last year was sort of an anomaly year given a multitude of different issues arising around it. But Public Works Operations is generally good at spending their available money.
Yeah, and I don't think, it wasn't just a question of their goodness at it. But is that, if we allocated this much, is this, is there a reasonable expectation that the work would be completed? And I'm hearing that there is, and I'm satisfied with that.
Okay, Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund. This is a standard obligation coming out of the fund. There is a slight increase for EFOR, city-owned assets is at 329,000. And then, that's actually Eastside Fire and Rescue, I apologize. Our commitment to them under their proposed budget is 418,000. And that goes in for the replacement of the City of Issaquahs asset that they're using. Then included in this is one-time studies or analysis, or it's not of a reoccurring nature. So the council goals of 125,000, we have the 75,000 for the Mobility Master Plan. Old Town Vitality, that should be 20,000.
Yeah, the budget document says 15.
Yeah. Those two are reversed. Professional Marketing is 35, and Old Town, our commitment was at 20. And when I looked at the budget, I realized I did 15. And then, so that's the council goals. And then the Development Service Fee Update is 50,000. That's to go back in and look at an analysis because we have better information and do an update to our existing fees to make sure that development is paying for development. And then, we talked about it earlier, we have the nonprofit funding of these three items. You can see the 50,000 for Arch, Cougar Mountain, and then the Village Theater.
This would be a really good time to perhaps ask more questions about the Old Town Vitality, which was presented to Services and Safety, who was part of the nonprofit. Or, you know, and if the proposal is to invest in the front side of the Shell Station and create more of a community gathering space, including seating, a piano, artificial turf. So I would, and so I'm still, I've had a chance to hear the proposal. I'm still getting used to it, if I may put it that way. And I would really, I think, I have no doubt about the sincerity of this council's desire to invest in the vitality of Old Town. And I think this is a, I would ask that all, every council member take the opportunity to reviewing that information. And we can make sure, we at least point you to it if you don't have it already. It was last in the meeting packet for the Services and Safety Committee meeting this past October 2nd. So it is available online. Tola?
So a number of us generated Old Town Vitality goals for this year that got brought together in a common goal. And I'll just say, I'm not sure that this meets what I was looking for. I will be reviewing it further, but I think we were thinking about something much more substantial. And anyhow, that's what I wanted to say.
So there's one proposal on the table. So this is the one, this is the one for us to debate. Naina?
So to just what you just said, so the only suggestions that have been made on this council goal is this one? And so there's not an alternative idea? And so it's this or nothing? Or how does that work when there's not an alternative?
So we have just one, and it is, it's spot-on for the, at least in form of the 2015 goal that we approved, in that a capital project for, for Old Town Vitality. Bob?
Thank you, Paul. So there were a couple of components that we walked away from. And so we're always appreciative of enhanced clarity if we miss something. But if you go to page 2-19, one of the takeaways was, from this goal, was that you wanted to see something visible done, an investment done in the Old Town that was not a significant expenditure, but that was a verification that showed that the city was very interested and invested in Old Town. And so we met, the Economic Development Department met with DIA. We went through three proposed projects that they had. This was the one that was selected. It was, we felt, the best project that was identified. And then there was a whole nother component, which was identified kind of on page 2-19. So there's a, you know, task force that was gonna be identified of individuals that would be involved with that, working with the, in the upcoming year. So there's a huge part of the goal that's not reflected in that $20,000 investment. But that was our desire to try and, that was our attempt to try and meet the council's desire to see some investment that wasn't a lot of money, but it was definitely visible in the Old Town that that investment was taking place.
Absolutely. I don't think there's any debate. I know that what we have here in the budget, which includes the summarization for the goal. And there it is, and we, council did approve this in terms of a project in 2015. But of course, you know, you put something real on the table, and new clarities become evident. Naina?
Yeah, so thank you. Indeed, what's happened and teaches me how to write a goal next year. The, I think, similar to Tola's response, I had visions in my mind that were perhaps, knowing it wouldn't be so big, it's not a lot of money, but something that was more district-wide and district-felt, something that pervaded Old Town rather than just one location. Don't know where I had that idea, but I just had it in my head. That's why this seems a little disjointed from what I first expected. So I wouldn't say offhand how effective this would be. I need to think about it a little more. And I didn't have the benefit of listening to these other two alternatives. It's just something that's come to mind to consider.
It might be, to help settle our minds on this, it might be helpful to get a little information about the others. I mean, I appreciate, I respect the review and process that you went through, but I think it might help settle us.
Can we get all three? Because I, this probably came to Services?
No, only the final. So that's what I just asked for, was information about the other two as well.
But I'm saying even the final, that could be included in the information.
It's in the packet for the, you can get the same information we had presented to us in the Services and Safety packet from October 2nd.
October 2nd, okay. Because when I hear turf field.
Artificial.
Artificial turf field.
Has nothing to do with sports or anything, or.
Well, the first thought I had.
Or 10-year replacement.
Replacement funding, yes, which I think seven years later, we're still trying to figure out, but.
So, any other comment about that item? Other items?
We're onto a new section. Included in the mayor's proposal is the 15,000 for the Community Alert System, which is the reverse 911. There was a request of council from the 2014 budget to make, to attempt to make this a priority and establish the funding, so this budget is proposing that funding. Technology, the ERP system, we had hoped that we would have made more progress in 2014, beginning the implementation. That is moving back. We're going to probably do the majority of our work beginning in 2015. So this is a rebudget of the resources from 2014. And then we have a couple of smaller projects. We have around 26,000 for the Police Department over five years that the council approved in 2013 for an upgrade to their spillman system. So we're in year three of a five-year period. And then there's a very, there's a small 6,000 for the funds portion of the munis operating costs. The biggest portion is for our debt service, for councilmatic debt. So that's, a lot of that sales tax money is then used to repay. So, that's, a lot of that sales tax money is then used to repay the debt on the councilmatic bonds. And then one of the, sort of the later-breaking items is tenant improvements for 30,000. In working with the city facilities, they just recently indicated that they were up on our roof in the main city hall. We have some significant problems, and as far as exceeds what their budget is, the 30,000 is potentially what they might need in case they have to re-roof the whole roof. They're looking at various options and working at some consultants. The low end could be someplace around 15,000, but they're still deciding, given the nature that it's a roof, the administration's recommendation is we moved it up on the priority list because it's something, need to fix the roof before it starts leaking.
Stacy?
Nope.
Oh, sorry. No, I saw you.
26 more funds to go.
Yeah. Some of the other ones are a little faster. So, this is just.
We're not even halfway there.
Yeah. So the Street Improvement Fund, beginning this, you can read it, estimated beginning our projects and our ending, and then going on to probably what's more of interest is the actual capital projects. And so with that, Sheldon is prepared to talk about our larger projects in this fund.
Thank you, Diane. I'm going to talk about some of the larger projects here, and so, if I don't talk about a specific project that you want to ask a question about, feel free and ask that. But, beginning with the first two, those are two of the three projects that are contained within the MTFA agreement. That was part of the development agreement that was approved last night for Costco. The North Issaquah one for 62nd has primarily design work, right-of-way acquisition, and permitting processes. That's going, and then, the second one, North Issaquah Roadway Improvement, generically stated there, that's actually the East Lake Samamish Parkway Road construction. That's expected to go under construction next year sometime first part of summer, middle of summer. We still are in the process of acquiring our right-of-way for that project, and there's an agenda bill actually coming forward on October 20th to authorize some processes there. The Complete Streets Program is the Northwest Dogwood sidewalks. The council approved an application to the Transportation Improvement Board for grants. That grant, if it comes in, it'll be about $400,000. So there's about $320,000 of city money in that. And that'll complete the sidewalks on the east side of Issaquah Creek along Northwest Dogwood. So you'll actually have sidewalks from Newport Way all the way to Front Street then.
North or south side?
Both sides.
And how many city dollars, Sheldon?
About 320,000 city.
And the TIB dollars have not been confirmed yet?
They haven't. CIB confirmation of dollars does not occur until November 21st.
And so that would also be for the first two, for the 62nd Street and Samamish Parkway? We haven't heard back from.
Only for 62nd, we haven't heard back. The TIB money for the East Lake Samamish Parkway is approved, and you guys have already accepted that grant. That was about 3.4 million, if I remember correctly.
So there'll still be some city dollars in that, or where's the rest of the funds from?
From the partnership with Costco. This is part of the MTFA. And then, the Northwest Dogwood Bridge Replacement Project. That is a federally funded project, 80% federal money, 20% city money. It also has a flood benefit, so we're able to use some flood control zone district money that we had to help match that project. And, an important piece on this one is, is that when the bridge is under construction, the road will be closed through traffic, so.
Estimated time?
It should take basically the summer to get it constructed, but I don't know the exact time, probably four months of closure, I'm guessing. And then, the last project I want to talk a little bit about is the Southeast Black Nugget Road Retaining Wall, $190,000. And earlier consultant studies identified the need to inspect and do appropriate repairs and so forth on the tieback anchors themselves. And so, that work would have been part of the larger-scale project that's been delayed. And so, we need to get in there and inspect those anchors and do appropriate repairs and the like if, you know, we're going to continue to delay the larger-scale reconstruction essentially of the wall. So, that's what that is about. There's about 156 tieback anchors that need to be inspected.
I can't remember if there was conversation earlier, a couple of years ago, about the opportunity that King County might want to help? Okay, just, well, we talked about it.
I think we got $75,000 from that.
We did talk about it.
Yeah.
We got 70.
Yeah. I think the main thing I want to say was, we didn't delay the project because what happened was, we got an evaluation at that time, and it said, you know, this wall's got 10, 15 years of life left. And so we did have about, those 800 to 900,000 that we were going to use to appropriate for that. And so council said, kind of keep it into the fund balance and track it, even though it's not been set aside. And so, that 190,000 is coming out of that money that we kind of set aside a couple of years ago. Much better put.
Tola?
Because you said that was the last one you wanted to talk about from this list, so Mountainside Drive, Southwest Slide Repair, is that 40K to do it?
That's actually to reestablish the shoulder. We've been monitoring the slide that occurred a number of years ago, and there hadn't been any activity. So we're going to go in and we're going to reestablish the shoulder.
Okay. Because the road itself is impinged by the slide, right? There's.
Just the shoulder is impinged.
There's Jersey barriers up and.
Yeah, we put barriers up and everything, but it hasn't, the headscarf has not gone into the asphalt during.
Right, it hasn't gotten any worse.
Hasn't gotten any worse, we've been monitoring it, so we're just going to reestablish the shoulder.
Okay.
Reconstruct the shoulder.
Okay. So it'll be back to normal?
It'll be back to normal from a user perspective, yes. The slide, since it's been stable as far as we can tell, unless it re-initiates, we're not anticipating any issues.
All right, thank you.
I have a question, if, I don't know if this would be the appropriate time. I, I haven't had an opportunity to look at the, the TIP, Transportation Improvement Program, did I get that right? And I, was there, in the, was there anything in that for 2015 for the study of the pinch point on what I will call West Lake Samamish Parkway? The road also known as West Lake Samamish Parkway?
There was, but it's not recommended to move forward with that study at this time.
Can, can you tell us why?
The options and alternatives carried with it, significant costs, and there was no real opportunity to rectify the problem without substantially impacting the residences along that. We did some further evaluations and gave the mayor a report on it.
So did you just say that in, without spending the $50,000, your own professional opinion, is that a alteration to achieve the desired outcome of some type of more safe, non-motorized transportation on that road? Would be just so expensive, let's not even study the pinch point? I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Yeah, that's, that's a pretty good paraphrased summary, yes. And, their opportunity was that, in the future, WashDOT still has plans to deal with the I-90 shoulder lanes and things like that, and some other improvements that they have on their radar screen. And so at the time which WashDOT does theirs, actually the recommendation is to see at that time if we can accommodate getting some additional property from WashDOT to the south to be able to shift things around. But that's, still, that item, even if we were to do that, is very, very expensive.
All right, thank you. Josh?
I, I don't want to get into tonight in the interest of time, but hopefully at our next meeting, with some of the questions that I asked, we can look at the trade-offs we're making with some of the projects, particularly Complete Streets, which I think the pinch point falls under primarily because it is a non-motorized, you know, residents characterize it as a safety issue. But, you know, I, I guess I just, I feel it's disingenuous to suggest we're spending money on Complete Streets. We're not. We budgeted $320,000 of city money for one project, which happens to be a sidewalk. And yes, Complete Streets is used to fund sidewalks, but that, that program was intended for smaller, lower-cost, multiple projects around the city. And, you know, perhaps that's the trade-off we're making this year, is we're saying, well, we can get one big project done at, you know, a better economy of scale. And maybe that's the answer. But, we never have had that discussion this entire year. And so, as part of the questions that I asked by email, I really want to see at our next meeting what our trade-offs are, because I know there's a priority matrix of Complete Streets projects. And it's kind of like Paul said earlier, the, you know, sell it to us. I think you've got some good arguments to sell it, in terms of why we want to do it this way, but I still don't know what we're trading off against, which kind of gets back to, I think, a comment you made earlier about something else, which is, what, what are we not getting by spending the money here? And maybe this is the best option, but I just don't feel like we should call it Complete Streets Program. It's not. So, hopefully we can get that information back to us, because the committee did not have a discussion on prioritization this year. And we were told to wait until budget time to do that.
So we can prepare, we got your questions, we can prepare the list, or give you the information that you're requesting. It is a Complete Streets, it fully meets the requirements of the program from our perspective. And so we'd anticipated that when we were making that planned investment. It was actually kind of saved for two years to be able to meet the requirements. You know, if we didn't put the sidewalk in, it would really be an incomplete street. If you did walk that area, I don't know if you've walked over there, since the sidewalk's gone in on the one side, it's made a substantial safety improvement in that general area. And we, it makes sense, if you're going to re, you know, tear up the bridge and tear up the street, that you go ahead and, instead of bringing in and creating a two-year or a three-year construction cycle to match that up and try to get it all done in one year, if you possibly can. And so that's really why we invested it. It meets all the parameters and the criterion in the program. What you're raising is a, is a good question, which is where should our priorities be? And the mayor's recommendation was that we should use the full funding, obviously, for this, into that year.
This project, though, was labeled in the TIP as Northwest Dogwood Street Improvements, as I recall. It was a capital project in the TIP called out as a separate capital project. It was never a Complete Streets project, as far as I'm aware. So what we're saying is, we're going to use the Complete Streets Fund to fund this important capital TIP project. But I wouldn't call it a Complete Streets Fund project. And that's the problem I'm having, is I see $0 for Complete Streets funding.
All right, so noted. Any other questions for Sheldon?
Oh, but wait, there's more.
Okay.
The next fund is our mitigation fund. This fund is a restricted fund that has a lot of money set aside from either our impact fees or our mitigation fees. The recommendation, if you remember, in the Capital Improvement Fund, is to move the 150,000 that we had anticipated moving this year, moving it next year. And also for the Street Improvement Fund, for the overall projects, is to move $300,000 to complete the, the assigned projects that we've indicated in the document. We also have 75,000, and it's just to do some study and analysis, what should we do with this fire station, 71, what are the options? So it's really sort of just a set aside at this point in time. We had talked about doing some improvements, but now there's some conversation, you know, where should our stations be located? So, so this is just sort of some of the fire mitigation money that has been set aside. And so very little activity, you can see a very strong balance in that account. And, really, there's nothing significant in that fund. Just a lot of cash that I'm trying very hard to invest. Questions?
Berlum?
So Diane, on page 7-8, it looks like the 150,000 is the additional money for the skate park?
No.
So that's, it says Capital Improvement Fund Skate Park.
That is the money we budgeted this year to accomplish the 700, the 350,000. It's just coincidentally that it's 150,000.
Oh, I see, okay.
The additional 150,000, the mayor's recommendation was because the real estate excise tax was coming in stronger than we had anticipated. And there was a desire to sort of build this once and meet the community desire, we added the additional 150,000.
Okay, so it came from the real estate excise tax. And then the second question was, with, I'm not really sure I understand how the mitigation fund works, but is there an associated project list or wish list that goes with the 12 million?
No. It's, money is held in that account pending the different projects. You don't, they have to go for projects that are capacity projects, so you can't use it for repair and maintenance, you have to use it, except for some of, we have some money that, like we have $5 million from the Lakeside Industries, and that money can be used for general purposes and isn't restricted by state law, but we still go ahead and manage it separately so we can track it. But the majority of the money is, we evaluated annually in the budget development, where best can we use this money and.
So the Lakeside 5 million is outside of the 12?
No, it's included in the 12.
Paul, just a quick one.
Sure, Eileen.
Painting of the storage yard area?
I can do that one.
Can you give?
Okay. 79. So we're moving on to the Shop Construction Fund, the next fund. So currently it has 650,000, the recommendation is for 135,000. They want to do some LED retrofit. Since the time of the publication of the budget and working with the Confluence Park event, originally the recommendation was to spend the 70,400 to pave the southeast, southeast storage yard over at Public Works Operations. Our recommendation is to repurpose that money and hold it pending the, our application to the State of Washington for a 2.5 million Confluence Park. And then look at the overall design of how do we best manage our park operations, our public works operations, where should the facilities be? So the 70,000 would go towards a study, once we know whether or not we were going to get the 2.5. Last year we had recommended doing some additional study to locate the park's maintenance facility. We did not get the grant, so we didn't spend the money. So we're, so then we thought, well, that project is off the table, how best to use some of this money? Recommendation was to pave, now we're saying, let's just wait and see if we get the 2.5 million grant for the park maintenance facilities, and how does it relate to Public Works Operations?
Naina?
Just catching me up, where is the storage yard area located?
Over there.
Bob, 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 this is a direction question?
Yeah.
So that's not me.
Well, you point it up.
No, I pointed it there.
It would be north of 90, over by the RV park.
It's at the Public Works Operations Office.
North, north is left?
Okay. Yes. Newport Way Fund, we've talked about, perhaps repurposing that revenue and using it for some other construction project. We have the Centralized ITS Fund. We are proposing doing additional flashing yellow, that is 123,000. The ending fund balance would be 147,000. In the 2016 budget, we would recommend that we use the remaining amount. This is from the 2005 bond issue. So this money will have, will be 15, 10 years old. And our bond council has, you can tell it's getting a little late. Our bond council has strongly encouraged us to use the remaining bond issue dollars. So we'll be coming back in 2016 to use the remaining dollars. Transit Station Fire Station, 104,000 is balanced, has been carried forward. Transit Station Fire Station, 104,000, is balanced, has been carried forward for a couple of years. The Highland Parks Facility has around $16,800. Once again, it's a bond fund from the 2006 bonds. We're recommending that we move it into the park improvement fund and use it for additional project improvements that have a parks and recreation nature.
Diane, question?
You lost me. You were talking about transferring the Transit Center Fire Station funds?
No, the Highlands Park of 16,000, so it'd end up with a zero balance.
Oh, it comes to a zero balance?
Yes.
I was trying to forget how you were going to transfer.
No, it would end up with a zero balance.
Mary Lou.
Diane, and the Newport Way Construction Fund was the $250,000 expenditure in 2013. Was that designed?
No.
No.
That was a repayment of funding, and I was just starting here, but it was a re, we had moved some money, and I think either from the mitigation fund or the street improvement fund. We didn't use all of that money because when we were originally doing the project, there wasn't enough bond proceeds. When we had that available cash, we returned that money since we weren't spending it. But I can't remember the source.
Another question, Diane. The Transit Center Fire Station, 104,000, that was a bond measure.
Yes.
Is there limitations as to what we can spend those dollars on?
Fire-related activities.
Any fire-related activity?
Capital.
Or capital. And it doesn't necessarily have to be at this station?
No.
Okay.
So, the Park Improvement Acquisition Fund. The city issued $8 million in new voter-approved debt in 2014. We still have $2 million that we will be issuing at some point in time. So from the administration's perspective, what we did was, rather than issuing the entire 10 million, and then the voters having to repay debt service on money we have yet to spend, we decided to go ahead and delay the additional $2 million until we spent the majority of the money. So the council gave us authority in the bond ordinance to issue it when we believed that we were in need of the additional $2 million. But you'll see in the very last slide, what that has resulted in is a very, very marginal increase in our voter-approved property tax assessment to pay the debt service. So it was a really wise investment to delay that additional $2 million. So, given that, we are looking at trying to spend the majority of the money. Next year, we're looking at 4.6 million for the pool, 1.5 for the parks improvement, Confluence Park, 895,000. That number could change depending on the state application that we are making. And then, open space. We have a variety of property acquisitions in relationship to the Green Necklace that we have been considering that, we also have an application into the King County Conservation Futures. So depending on what looks best, we have not specifically identified the projects because often, at times, when you identify some of the property acquisition, the price changes. I'll leave it at that. And then, trail improvements, we want to make some trail improvements, and that's funded by the new King County Parks Levy funding that we receive. So we're going to be spending a lot of money in a few select projects. Any questions? Okay. Enterprise funds. So here's the operating funds for each one of the utilities. At this point in time, there, well, there is no recommendation for any rate increases. The one increase we will have is in the sewer utility. There is, King County Metro has asked for a rate increase, and so that is included in both our revenue estimates and our expenditures. It's pretty much the money we collect as part of the utility bill from King County Metro. We then pass on to them for the activities that they perform for the city. So the revenues in the water fund, we, there, if you look at what our estimate is for this year compared to next year, we had an extremely dry summer. We don't anticipate, what we do then is, we sort of back off that number and try to normalize it so that we're not becoming dependent on an increased growth. Expenditures are 5.3 million. Of that 5.3 million, 1.5 million is going to capital projects, and 600,000 is going to debt service. So that you can see, of the 5.3 million, 3.3 million is truly related to the overall operations. Then, we have a reserve requirement of two months, so that's 16.7. If you take 16.7 times the 5.3, it should be 890,000. So we have excess funding above the requirement of 2.4 million. So that's how you read all of those sewer and storm.
Tony. I'm sorry, I, looking at water, you've got a beginning fund balance, you've got revenue and expenditures, and you have an ending fund balance. Then you have your transfers to capital.
Yeah.
And so, that million five and that 600, that's not out of the 5.3, right? Didn't you, you just said it was out of the 5.3, but it's not, right?
Thank you. Okay.
It's in addition. You're really, you're totaling 7.4 million.
Yeah, you're correct.
Okay. Good. I just wanted to make sure I understood the spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to make sure I understood it.
Yep, absolutely. But one of the things that's important is when we budget, we budget on a cash basis. It's one of the anomalies about government, but when we actually do our reporting, we do it on full accrual. So while we have X, from a budgeting cash flow perspective, we have sufficient resources to manage our operations. However, that excess above requirement is really our set aside for depreciation and future projects. And so, you can see that we're using some of that money in the ensuing year to do some of our capital projects. So it's really, that crosswalk is sort of like apples and elephants. It's really hard to make, there isn't an easy crosswalk between cash budgeting and financial reporting. Now that I've all, yeah. But when we issue debt, or when people look at our activities, they look at our financial statements versus our budget. So, okay. Moving on. For our capital projects, you can see the proposed projects. We have a lot of expenditures for capital projects planned in the water utility. One of the things in looking at it from a cash flow perspective, I, because it's, in 2015, we have a lot of capital projects planned, but in 2015, 2016, we wouldn't have as many projects. So I tried to look at our cash flow over a number of years in, versus isolation and our ability to accomplish the projects. And when I was looking at the cash flow over like three years, I was comfortable with the department's recommendation for these particular projects and our ability to finance all of those projects. So from a financial perspective, I'm comfortable with the ending fund balances and the proposed projects. The actual projects, I'll turn over to Sheldon to talk you through.
Okay, thank you.
Next one?
Thank you. Awesome. Similar to in the streets, I'm going to hit the larger-scale projects, but if you have questions about others, feel free and ask. In the design phase, we have the South Spar Booster Pump Station and Transmission Main. That's a large-scale project that provides a redundant source of water supply at the Highlands, at the Spar Road. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll start over again. The design phase, the South Spar Booster Pump Station, is expected to complete design next year for a booster pump station and transmission main that goes up the South Spar alignment, not in the road necessarily, but off to the side, to provide a redundant water supply system up to the hill to Issaquah Highlands. It also includes a 30% design coordination effort between these facilities and a future reservoir at the 297 grade line that is forecasted to be needed probably 15 years plus or minus out as a result of the growth in the central Issaquah area, which would be provided in the 297 operating zone. So that's that project. The construction improvements, this year, completing the design for the Mount Hood Pump Station replacement. So next year, it's planned to reconstruct the Mount Hood Pump Station. That is at the end of Mount Hood Drive, up on the hill. We have the annual water main replacement program as well next year, so. Other than that, the other ones get relatively smaller in scale, and so if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Real quick, the South Spar Booster Pump Station continuation.
Yes.
Well, that, actually, that coupled with the, actually, you mentioned the new resident with the new capacity, 14 years out, what have you. What impact are these projects going to have on the, I would guess, they would call that the north or west side of the Spar Road? There's a, there's a very highly-used trail through that area.
Right.
That's an important non-motorized connection between the Highlands and the valley.
The exact alignment of the transmission main going up there hasn't been determined yet. The consultants are actually studying that right now. But it would probably go up either the alignment of the trail or alongside the trail, but the trail will be reconstructed. And once the construction's finished, you won't know the difference of what you see today and what's there. So probably during construction, there's going to be some disruption of the trail use.
Okay, thank you. Diana?
Has the location of that reservoir been determined yet?
We're actually doing some geotechnical work this week and next, looking at sites.
Yeah, I'd forgotten about that for a while, so I'm glad to bring it back to mind. So I'd love to hear an update whenever you have it. Thank you. So these were the smaller projects that Sheldon was talking about. So any questions? There's a description included in the budget document on the specific projects.
Cathartic.
Is there a capital?
No, the word cathartic was on.
Oh, we're in sewer. I didn't realize that. Is there more that you have to do? I'm sorry.
Sewer capital, there's not a whole lot of activity in the sewer capital projects. We're continuing the design work on the Holiday Inn lift station replacement that got a little bit more complex than what we originally had anticipated. And so, the consultant is looking at design alternative three now because the first two were not viable alternatives that we started going down. So I expect it to complete the design next year. This is an important project that, in that the Holiday Inn pump station, as it currently exists, needs to be relocated to be moved outside of the way of one of the road projects that are identified under the Costco MTFA. So we have a couple of years left to get it moved and everything, but we need to keep progress going. And then, smaller scale, just continuing manhole rehabilitation.
Pardon? So the manholes can be reeater society?
Yes, that's correct. They've done their time. Stormwater capital gets a little bit more exciting. We have quite a bit of work in the stormwater capital. At least, it's a cleaner topic, right? Yeah, it's getting late. The Confluence Park Stream Rehab, Stream Habitat Restoration Project is a continuation from this year, still working through the Corps of Engineers permitting process for that project, but that's associated with also the Confluence Park work, roughly $1.3 million of construction work along the East Fork and Main Stem bordering Confluence Park. We're going to continue with the L rig decommissioning in accordance with the settlement agreement. Yes, Mary Lou?
I thought there was, and I can't find it right now. Okay, here it is. It's on page 825. There's just a little issue with some of the language around the L rig. Prior year accomplishments on the page 825, abandoned the L rig and performed analysis, but then, back in the project thing, it still looks like it's funding for abandonment. Is it funding for the next steps after abandonment? Like, what have you done, and what's the money?
The L rig decommissioning is, I would say, that's kind of a generic topic. That's really the genesis of the settlement agreement. This year, the L rig will be decommissioned and put out of service. But as a result of that, we had to do a study to determine what other projects would be necessary to accommodate the additional flows that that facility used to infiltrate into the ground and is now going on to the surface water. And so, the work in the future, the 750,000, is for those mitigation projects for that increased surface flow.
If you could maybe look at the language in the tables and make the descriptions work a little bit better, that would be great.
We can do that. East Lake Sammish Parkway Drainage Improvements, there's some, during heavy rain events and so forth, some flooding localized along East Lake Sammish Parkway up around the BMC, just north of the BMC. That project is set to correct that localized flooding issue. The annual stream habitat restoration program.
Is nothing we're going to do along that roadway having to do with the package we just passed? Would even address that?
Has nothing to do with the East Lake Sammish Parkway improvements that are from Black Nugget Road to Issaquah Falls City Road. So that's separate and distinct from the MTFA projects in the Costco DA. However, we do have a developer contribution for those drainage improvements from the developer of the Issaquah 22 property. So as their development reaches a certain point, that project will need to be done, but that's probably not for another year to out because they're not going as fast as what they thought in development. But we're, it's on our books to be able to get it done sooner. The annual stream habitat restoration, the 340,000, a component of that is grant-related, and it is for the Lewis Creek Restoration. That's the project that's slated for that habitat restoration is on Lewis Creek. And then, we have the annual storm drain rehab and continuing to improve the operations and so forth up in the Issaquah Highlands for capacity improvements. Another project note would be the Juniper Street Park Restoration. There was a grant that we were able to get. This is the pit property at the corner of Fifth and Juniper and right along the stream. So that project, the restoration will also have some flood-related benefits to the local area as well. So that's slated for design work and hopefully, some construction this year.
A question for Bob, since you mentioned that. So that parcel of itself, do we have, beyond restoring it, I assume this project is going to restore it to some more native state? Do we have any, is there any plans beyond retaining that as open space?
So due to the source of funds, which was a grant funding?
Okay, I'm with you, I'm listening.
You're limited in terms of what types of improvements you can make to the property, so you can't utilize it for active recreation, for example?
So it's community facilities, open space? In the Burnson Park, south of the roadway, is that the same?
I'm not sure off the top of my head, like, the source of funds that was used to acquire that property. So if it was, if it was the similar fund that we've used in the past, the county conservation funds, and we're, and it was open space, then we'd be limited to it as open space.
Okay, thank you.
Just jumping in. I wondered if you might give me a little more information about revenue? And you've, all these, there's really great detail on page 828 about grants and contributions. But are these already secured? And what, what are their status? Page 828. So the King County Conservation District grant funds for Confluence, the WIRA for Lewis Creek and the Juniper Street.
The King Conservation District for Confluence Park is secured. The King Conservation District for Confluence Park is secured. The King Conservation for Lewis Creek is secured, and the Juniper Street is secured as well. And the capital contributions from developers are conditions of development that, as they develop there, to provide us the dollars.
So these are already approved projects?
They're approved revenue sources, yes. And the L rig is through the settlement agreement with the district.
Before we leave capital funds, real quick question for you. It took me a while to find the slide, and I just wanted to ask, on the park bond stuff, the items that were listed to be done in 2015, are the other items that were part of the park bond, like TVP drainage, playground replacement, that sort of thing, is that coming in 2016? In other words, all the park bond-type projects, could they not all be done in one year? So the anticipation is to spread them out eventually?
The playground equipment will be done this year.
Oh.
Pardon?
And drainage?
And drainage. Artificial turf, we have the funding, but we're also, the project is larger in scoping, then we have grant fund, bond issues. So we're also looking at some additional financing and ways of packaging it to do more up in that area. We still have, the budget is $2 million. We have $2 million for open space, so, you know, so that's still pending. Part of the concern is typically when I went back and look at the history of our spending patterns, typically takes us about 10 years to spend park bonds funds. So we're just, so a lot depends on the project and the success. But, you know, we'll spend more of this issue because it's primarily dedicated to one large project.
Perfect, thanks.
And the drainage is in Tibbetts Valley Park, and the monsoon we had on Sunday did not flood the fields.
That's really good to hear. Hopefully, we can replace the artificial turf someday.
Well, we're down to five slides. So, and there really are smaller operations, and it's just really updating you on what's happening. We have our unemployment fund. We are self-insured for our unemployment, so we're on a pay-as-you-go. We've increased the appropriations as a result of the Parks and Rec reorganization. And as I indicated, we're on a claims-made basis. We'll be bringing forward to the council, because it looks like one of the recommendations from the auditor was, is for council to set a policy on that ending fund balance, which is $33,000 that we're estimating. We typically like that balance to be a little bit higher, but we have some time because this is an anomaly. If I went back and look at the history, you could see a bump in 2012 when we did some layoffs, that it's been pretty quiet around $30,000, $25,000 to $30,000 a year. And so we expect another little bump, and then we can take some time to replenish it. It's not something that we have to do over all, one period of time. So that's the extent of that one. Insurance, we're part of Washington City's Insurance Authority. We're, it's a cooperative where about 110 agencies participate. Our premiums is for $652,000. One of the things is, we have, we're trying to get that balance down to around $500,000. And the reason we're looking at $500,000, it represents the amount of self-insurance that if the city of Issaquah was the only city to sustain a flooding or something like that, that would be our deductible. So, so that's, so we're trying to target that $500,000. And what we're doing is gradually reducing the balance so that it isn't over in just one year, and we can smooth out that reduction and drop that balance down. Medical self-insurance, this is our second year of full operation. We've made some changes in how we manage it internally, but the beginning fund balance is estimated to be around $580,000. Revenue is 3.9. Expenditures are around 3.8. Ending fund balance is estimated $710,000. Our goal over several years is to accumulate a reserve equal to four times the incurred but not reported claims. So that's sort of, and, and this is not a finance thing, this is an actuary. An actuary goes in, looks at our claim history, and says, based upon what I've been seeing in our claims, your IBNR is X, and then we're working towards that reserve. That is a recommendation to get four times that. So we want to get that cash balance up around $1.4 million. It was around $350,000 last year, 20, it'll bump up to 500, and then we'll go to 700. And even with trying to grow that, we're not recommending any increases either to the city contribution or employees' contribution. So we're doing well with being self-insured, and we're managing our resources really well. On average, in the industry, most cities or organizations are seeing some place between a 4% to 6%, increase and often changes in plan design. Any questions? Nope, okay. The last, one of the last major funds is our Equipment Rental and Replacement Fund. It has two major components. We have the one portion that is operating, and then we have that, another larger portion that is equipment replacement. So of the total budget, $1.7 million is for repairs and maintenance. It includes all, a certain select inventory of our vehicles. It includes all the maintenance, the fuel, the parts in repair, and the labor. And then also fire equipment. It sort of passes from the cap, and it's really more consistency because I really looked at why are we making the extra step? But we take the money from the Capital Improvement Fund, we move it to the ERNR Fund, and then we move it to EFOR. So I was really just going to change the budget, but then we lose all of the history of how we've been doing it forever and ever. Compared to previous years, we're not really replacing, recommending that many replacements. We have $889,000. It includes the rebudget of the ERP system, because as I stated earlier, we didn't, we're not going to be starting on that project. We lost about five or six weeks doing some contract negotiations. So we aren't starting as early as we had anticipated. Fleet maintenance needs some additional equipment for $10,000. Administration, they have a car that is, will be eight years old, so we're recommending replacement of that. Technology improvements is our annual PC replacement and some server replacements. Police equipment is replacement of two vehicles and a motorcycle. Parks and Rec are some, some of their equipment, and then the replacement of a utility truck. So these are all planned expenditures where we, when we move money in, we're looking at the eventual replacement of that asset, and we've been accumulating reserves so when the time comes, we can replace that asset.
Honda's no longer making the ST-1300. Do you know what bike they're going to be purchasing?
No, I do not.
I would be curious. The ST-1300 went out of production last year, so.
I don't really know that one.
Tola really, he really wants.
I love my pay grade.
He really wants to know about the one that's being replaced.
He wants an Indian or something like that.
It's going to be a nice car, Josh, yes?
Yeah, speaking of nice cars, it was one of the questions I asked about the quote-unquote executive sedan. And I'm not, I'm not bitter that there's not a legislative sedan. But, you know, I, I gotta say, I mean, you can sell me on it in your answers to my questions, but 38K, that's a darn nice vehicle. I, I don't think our two cars in our household add up to 38K. And so, you know, we can debate whether one needs to be replaced after eight years on the road or not. I'm guessing it's not a Honda then, because those tend to last pretty good. But although not the, the AR, whatever that model is.
That was a motorcycle.
Motorcycle, okay. Well, I, I just think 38K needs to be on the table to talk about whether we would authorize that much money for a car for whatever purpose it is. That's, that's just really, that seems a little cush.
Does that include maintenance in the future for that vehicle till it's replaced again?
No. No? Right now, that car's a Toyota Camry Hybrid, so I think the number came from Fleet. I don't even know what they've been thinking about in terms of replacement. But yeah, if you want to reduce it to Ford Focus or something, you can do that, too. I mean, there's, there's just the number that came out of Fleet Maintenance, so it's part of the annual replacement program.
It's not just up to me.
Well, I have to say, it's, it's an item.
It's an item.
Engineering services, I spoke to this one at the opening comments, the council member Polly. There is some cash sitting in there. We're actually recommending not spending it.
How many times?
We just need to do some additional closeout. It's one of those, it was a very complicated fund with money coming in from multiple funds, and we're just, it has taken us longer than we had anticipated to go back in and look at the historical transactions. Once we figure it all out, we'll make some recommendations. If you ask me right at this moment, part of my initial recommendation is if some of its general fund-related would recommend, one fund we haven't talked about was the contingency fund. So that might be a recommendation coming in from the mayor's office that we use some, if that funding is available, that we use some money to begin the contingency fund. And then the very last fund of the city is the trust fund, the Ruth Key Sustainable Environmental Award. It has a balance of $28,507, and we would do our annual award of $500 to whatever recognized recipient that is unknown at this time.
This may be a really dumb question, but we're not allowed to earn interest on that? On the principal?
Yes, we do.
So you've got miscellaneous income?
Hundred dollars.
Of a $30,000 fund?
Well, keep some of it, I keep some of it liquid. I don't invest all of it, but I just, I just put a number in, because it wasn't previously invested.
I see. It just seems like we should, I mean, I don't know. Certainly more than 100 bucks, 30,000 bucks. Just curious.
Probably is, you know, once.
It just seems like you should almost, I mean, you should almost be able to cover the expenditure or come close to it.
That's the goal, to keep it sustainable. I think the challenge is the interest rate. What are we getting out of state now, like 0.01% or something?
0.008.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's just, you know, we put in pretty safe, liquid investment, but you.
We could probably earn a little bit more, but most of our investments right now are going out three, four years. We're earning about 1, 2 to 1, 5. We're very limited in the investments. They, it's called the prudent man rule. We don't invest in stocks. We don't invest in mutual funds. We cannot. It is, I have seen employees at elective treasures lose their job for doing investments that are risky, and they've lost their principal, so.
I just want to point out that with this fund balance, you could fund the award apparently for 58 more years. And since no one's won it for the last two, according to the budget book.
Well, it's only one, because we haven't done.
You missed one. You didn't put 2013 in on the list.
Yeah.
But anyway, it could be funded for 58 years with no interest.
I don't know. I just noticed it was.
Well, we didn't do one in 2013. We'll do one in 2014, and we'll do one in 2015. 2013 is the one year we did not do the award. And I don't know, I don't know. So, oh, debt service. Almost, real close. Okay, so the last one that's really boring is the repayment of our debt. We have principal and interest payments of our VODA GO of $1.465. Principal and interest payments increased for all taxpayers, $237,000 to $1.7 million, including the 2014 bond issue. We did a refinancing of the 2001 senior bonds. Over the life of the bonds, we saved around $115,000. Councilmatic debt, principal and interest at the time of budget development was $2.2 million. Since that time last week, we have some councilmatic debt that is eligible for refunding. We'll be proceeding with that refunding, and on an annual basis, it'll be saving around $25,000 by refinancing that. LID guarantee, we have no transactions planned where we need to do a backfill to any of our funds. LID debt service is just our special assessment payments coming from third parties. It is really not a debt of the city. It is just merely conduit financing. And then we have an arbitrage rebate fund of around $62,000. At this point in time, we don't owe anything to the IRS, so that money will sit there in the event that we have not spent some of our other debt that we might then incur some obligation to the IRS.
On the LID debt service fund, page 67, the debt service on the principal takes a really big jump in 2015, and you may have explained it, but I didn't hear it. So it goes from around 80 to 60, up to 21.
We're hoping for a positive outcome on some property, the Mallard Bay.
Okay, that was another question. How is this affected by the Mallard Bay?
Launch.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. And then on the LID guarantee fund, it says up at the top of the page that it's 5% of the outstanding LID bonds.
Yes.
So 5% of the outstanding bonds would be about $148,000, but it looks like the budget has $979,000 in it. So is this fund fat?
When it comes, it is yes.
Okay.
Okay, state law says the minimum balance is 5%. However, the money does not come from taxpayers or other funds. It comes from the payment from special assessments. So if we have an LID, and there's prepayment, and there's extra money, let's say we finished LID 23, and it's fully paid off, but there's some residual cash, we move it into the LID guarantee fund. So for instance, we currently have a very large property that has a large outstanding. While it's only 5%, right now, we have an obligation to the sewer utility to pay that assessment of about a half a million dollars. So you can see that one, so we tend to keep extra money in it because when you have concentration of that LID in one large parcel, it's, there's a lot of wisdom. If it was a multitude of a couple hundred, wouldn't be as concerned. But until, you know, when you have an LID like that. And then what happens is, is future LIDs, if we were to do them, if our guarantee fund was really, really low, we would then have to assess them an extra to get that money in. This way, it becomes a little bit financially palatable or desirable because they don't have to fund the guarantee fund.
So is it possible, then, just after that, where it says it's a policy to do this? Just to say, but it's a best, but as a best practice, we do that?
Sure, sure.
So know why it's bigger.
Absolutely.
And thank you for not using that fund to balance the budget this year.
I was just going to say, we, you know, the other thing is, you don't want to default on that bond. I mean, you, you could, in theory, because it's not a general obligation of the city. However, then the next time you wanted to go out for a special obligation bond, you're going to be paying, if you can get someone to buy it, you'll be paying through the nose on interest.
It makes total sense. I guess what I was trying to do in reading the policies and reading the budget was to see where the hard lines are. Like, if we're saying something in here, I'm trying to find out if that's a policy, and that money must be at this amount. So we should explain why we're carrying it higher than that number. We have general policy questions, too.
Okay. I think you're at the end of your presentation. I do, Mary Lou, you have some questions?
Yeah, but I have to sign off.
Okay, in the meantime, so I'm actually going to take, take you back to page 4-12. And it's in your performance measures.
Yes.
And there's a line in there called the investment portfolio. I don't recall ever hearing about that before. Could you, could you just talk about that? And I'd also be curious if there's any kind of results from your investments that we should know about.
So one of the things is, as you can see, historically in the past, we haven't been investing a lot of our portfolio. A lot of it has been just simply the interest rates. And over, particularly this year, I've been doing a lot more substantial investments. The overall goal or the industry standard that I'm The overall goal or the industry standard that I'm working towards is having about 60% of our overall cash invested. Some of it, and I have, my investment philosophy is to do a laddering effect, or up around no more than five to six years, depending on the interest rate. So, as Sheldon knows, and he's gone a lot of times, particularly in the capital projects fund, for instance, in 2012, we got about $3 million from Cascade Water Alliance when we did that transaction. And so when I talked to Sheldon, Sheldon goes, you know, I don't really need that money till 2019. So I took that 3 million dollars, tried to invest it out longer term in order to maximize the earnings. Part of it is trying to find things to buy and to invest in. A lot of things, you know, right now, like I said, a three-year, three and a half, if I can get 1.2, 1.5, that's better than the state investment pool that is at eight basis points. So, and like I said, you know, typically it's Fannie Mae, Farmers Home Loan, Freddie Mac, Sub-Washington State GO. So I just sort of, when I look at our portfolio, generally about once every two months, then I start making some calls to those people that really understand government investment, saying, what do you got, what do you have for sale, what meets my thinking about when I'll have that cash flow. So I'm actually trying to move that number up as rates are not decreasing, and I'm seeing some opportunities.
So you're restricted in what investment opportunities you can pursue?
Very conservative. Can't do anything, can't do REITs, can't do stocks, can't do.
Land.
Land, no, too speculative. What happens if we have another recession and property decreases by 75%? Can't do that. We could, but get in a lot of trouble.
All right, thank you. Nina?
Kind of off the cuff, inspired by your question, Paul, and by the scenario that you presented about money in hand for a project that won't be done till later, but help me with this, and I'm just going to venture a little conversation with you. If we're only getting 1.2% return on our money, but that project costs 3% to 5% more when we finally do it because of inflationary pressures, then it costs more to do it later. I'm just kind of speculating here, could there be, in some capital projects, savings to do it now when we're not getting a return on our money that covers for inflation?
Yes, depending on the project, but particularly when that, you know, if you just used that capital project money, a lot of that money is going for the SPAR booster pump station. That project is not ready to go, is not ready to be built. And so when we, there's only so much capacity that staff has, if in fact we wanted to use up the excess cash, then that really, what that means is hiring a lot of temporary employees for a year or two to get those projects up and going and get them completed. So it's sort of a trade-off between having the money available and then having the associated resources, so there's, what we try to do is a smoothing effect. But you can see that in the water utility in particular, we're looking, if I rec, like $4 million in capital projects, well, as the city administrator said, that is, their current scope of projects for this year is a lot for 12 people. You know, they have a very, very ambitious program even this year, and so they're trying to accomplish that. So, you know, absolutely, you know, one of the things is, you know, we try, you know, we just try to look at, it's, they're all moving targets, and how best do we utilize the city's resources and how best to spend them?
You ready, Mary Lou?
So, one item is just a general policy question, there was a lot of work on these policies last year, you brought them back, new draft and discussion. Are there more changes you're going to be proposing this year to these policies?
And probably in 2015, we'll be making some proposals on the, particularly the Internal Service Fund, the Unemployment Fund, our regular insurance fund, as well as, the actuary has recommended four times the IBNR, but it's one of the things that, when you look at state law, the council has to go in and approve what our reserve requirements are. So that was a nuance that just came to light as part, our review of the laws associated with the medical self-insurance fund.
Okay.
So we know those are coming back, and I think we had some other ideas on a couple of other things that we wanted to bring back through services and safety.
But they'll be 2015?
Yes.
Okay, and then just two questions on, to the policies we have now on 2-27. The second bullet in the second column talks about considering user fees, and it's sort of a blanket statement about cost recovery.
Yes.
But in, is there any fee for service we have besides parks that doesn't have cost recovery? And I know somewhere in the body, you say that parks doesn't have cost recovery, but our policy sort of contradicts that and says we try to get it everywhere. So, does that need to be looked at?
We actually have a lot of different user fees, whether it's a copying charge, whether it is our jail fees, whether it's our concealed weapons, parks and recreation, trying to think. So we have a variety of user fees in this city that, so that answers the first question. And then we try to increase them, part of the challenge is, we don't really have, we've been making small steps towards getting to the information of full cost recovery. If council remember, last year I started making the change of allocating insurance costs, allocating the utilities to the individual parks and recreation programs. And so we've been slowly transitioning so that we have data to determine what our costs are. And then the next thing is, we don't really have a system that collects everything the way we would need to without a lot of manual labor in calculating everything. So, yes, they need to be looked at, and yes, we're slowly getting there as far as collecting data and information, and then as that data and information gets improved, then we will be bringing additional recommendations back to council.
Okay, so this sort of says we're doing it, but the reality is we're moving towards doing it?
Yes.
Couple examples, too, would be, like, the transportation concurrency fee, you know, we saw earlier some of those numbers, that what we're currently charging isn't necessarily a full cost of recovery of the growth impact that it's having. So we probably got a whole slew of fees that aren't necessarily recovering 100% of their costs.
Oh, sorry, it's 2-27, the right-hand side, second bullet. Okay, well, that was just a question, I didn't know if it accurately described what we did.
So, if I may comment, others can please chime in, I think we did discuss that point, and I believe, I'm looking at the language, I think it was our intent that there is latitude in the discretion of the administration, it's just, there are times when it's, it makes sense and it's feasible, and others where, in order to even offer the service and give a benefit, we have to have some flexibility there. So, we did discuss that point last year.
And also, the data isn't quite there to make sure we're getting, okay.
When we originally wrote this, we knew this is where we wanted to head, so we wrote the language that way to begin moving us towards that.
So my question is, if it's just parks, and the answer is no, it's not, there's a lot of stuff.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff.
That we need to get the data in. Okay, and then the other one was the bullet below that, and it says, "The city will seek opportunities to generate additional revenues and gain further economies of scale its operations by providing services to other local jurisdictions." So besides the jail, are there other things that we do for other jurisdictions where we get full cost recovery?
Dispatch, prosecution, public defense.
And those ones, we're sure those are full, as best we know, full cost recovery.
There's probably more, off the top of my head, I'm not.
Well, I couldn't think of any, so.
I know.
That was it.
Any further questions? So.
We're back Thursday night?
Great performance tonight. Walking encyclopedia, pretty amazing. What is the plan, what's, Diane, what are we doing Thursday night?
Whatever you would like, Congressman. We're hoping.
We have a plan.
Well, the part of the challenge is, it's a really short, there's tomorrow, should get a lot of the council questions answered. So the real question is, how far can we get on those questions? And then if there's some policy, or if there's some things that the council wants, I mean, I think opportunity might be at leadership, some of the things that you would like to see that are reasonable to accomplish. Certainly could come back for a little bit, we've started on council member shares, responses, probably about 30% through, and I'm just waiting for some information from the departments. And I know that Emily's probably got a list of things that I think we could, if we can get them first thing tomorrow, we can begin working on.
So, I also think if the council's ready, we're done with our presentation, so it's really, at this point, deliberations that you may have, and I know Emily may want to run through some of the questions to make sure we've captured everything tonight before we end up adjourning.
Thank you, actually, that, you just got to the root of what my question was. I mean, we really are transitioning now to answering the outstanding questions, and then us all looking at one another and really deciding if we have brought out on the table all our points of discussion, and what, you know, what do we really have to deliberate? So I think, I think, one thing I got to give some thought to, well, maybe we don't need to do an email, but maybe I do, because some people look like they're fading, so maybe something in your inbox tomorrow night, I'm just ready to get going. You know, that's something we all need to give thought to. I know, I've heard, you know, Josh, we've thrown out a couple times, but I think we have to, we need to be holistic, you know, I like what we did, you know, last week, there are things for clarification, and there are substantive changes that you would like us to consider, both revenue side, expenditure side, policy-wise. And so, you know, the administration has laid out their proposal, they've made their pitch, and so I appreciate Mary Lou's references and referral back to the policies and understanding and double-checking how well we've done. But, you know, those are the bases, I think we all need to, you know, consider what we now, the information we now have, and if, well, what, I know that we have a, we have the public hearing dated, that's.
First council meeting in November.
In November, so that'll be the revenue, primarily the property tax, and the B and, no.
Under state law, you're required to have a revenue hearing on all changes in revenues, as well as a public hearing on the proposed budget. So, what I, what we began to do particularly last year was to have sort of the first public hearing on the budget in its totality. Then, because the budget represents such a significant policy document, rather than approving it that night, it's sort of like, take the ordinance and continue it to the second council meeting, so that we can then have another public hearing for those people that weren't able to make the first meeting, with then the council making a recommendation for, hopefully for adoption of the budget at that second meeting in November. So we give the community, we want to give the community two touch points versus one touch because of the significance of the document.
But isn't it weird to have a public hearing on the budget after we've completed our deliberations? There's no scheduled budget meeting even after public hearing number one, and it sort of gets to a comment that one of our citizens made last night, it just seems kind of odd, like, we haven't, we didn't get any public comment tonight because nobody showed up. In years, you know, yeah, we still have to adopt it, but, I mean, if folks come forward with comments and say, hey, what about this, or it catches our attention, I just want to comment that I feel like the process this year has been very compressed, and I mentioned that, I think, at the last meeting with the questions, that it's a very short turnaround time for you, the administration, to get back to us, and so it puts you in a pressure situation, it puts us in a pressure situation. I just feel like in previous years, we've had a more relaxed way of moving about this, and it feels like, you know, we're doing two meetings in one week now, and we're just, we're on this accelerated track.
Oh, absolutely, but part of the challenge was getting all of the council members, when we did a survey back in early September, trying to find common dates that it would accommodate everybody's schedule, and these were sort of the dates that everybody had in common, so it was what we then tried to do the best to accomplish, you know, the overall desires. So, yeah.
I was just going to say, you know, council always has the option to make amendments on the floor after the public hearing, if something comes up, and the council wants to do something, they got that opportunity to do that.
And part of the challenge, too, is the way the dates fell, because the first counts, the first Monday in October fell on the 6th or 7th, when typically it would fall like the 3rd or 4th, so then you have at least four, five more days from which you could play with the budget document on, too. So it wasn't, the alignment of the stars was not as good as in previous years.
And, you know, just speaking for myself, this is as good and as noticed of an opportunity, easy meetings for the public to participate and comment to us as any regular meeting that we have. And I think it's very clear, and I think we've communicated it before, too, I think understanding of the issues and formation of policy and decisions happens in this kind of committee work more than anything else, and so, you know, I don't know what else more we can do, you know, to encourage, well, there's probably more we can do, but I don't, I think you said it really well last night, and we've articulated numerous times the many opportunities that the public has to participate with us, and a number of members of the public avail themselves very effectively in doing that. So, but you're right, the actual approval is out, is beyond the current scheduled public hearing for, which are going to happen in November, and so we are absolutely free, as this council, as we see fit, to, you know, work this budget, and yet, you know, either in those meetings, or if we need to have a special meeting, not yet scheduled. We, that, those options are available to us. We have a plan, they're on the calendar, let's, if that works, that's great, if it doesn't work, we'll adjust our meeting schedule to make it work. Any other questions, or anybody else want to make a speech? This meeting is adjourned. Wait, not too late.
I did want Emily to kind of go through. Yeah, and just make sure we've captured everything, if we're missing something.
Do you need 15 or 20 minutes?
Pretty close, I think. And I'll just preface this by saying, the rookie would have also liked to have talked to her boss about a couple of these, so. Okay, there was a question about policies and evaluation criteria for human services agency funding, and I believe we said we could provide another copy of the criteria that was used in services review, so we'll be doing that.
Nonprofit or human services?
It's a general nonprofit funding.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, the nonprofit.
Nonprofit agency funding, okay. There was a question about complete streets priorities, and what were the options for the Newport Way funds? There was a question about.
I think those were two separate questions. I think one was complete streets, other.
They are.
Yeah, okay.
They are. I'm sort of combining. Question about whether we already own the streetlights in Talis, and what's the practice for the city in terms of owning and paying for electricity of those streetlights and There was a question about who will approve the five-year strategic plan for the arts fund. Whether there's a policy about what we buy? And Bob suggested that we could pose these questions to the commissions that could provide There are a few suggestions about providing additional verbiage in the budget document. I'm not going to read those back to you, but I've noted where we've said we will do that.
Just wanted to make a quick comment. So Emily's got a very thorough and complete list. So some of these things that will come out, like the recommendation to the Arts Commission, that's not, that's probably not going to come back as a question. As you all recall, there's a letter from the council president, from the council to the mayor, and usually you've got some budget recommendations that come out of that, and that would be something probably, if the council agreed, that would be reflected in that versus a, an answer. So we're making notes of those things as you're going through. This is your first budget, so.
This was the, the content of our discussion. What do we, what do we typically do in Q and A? Let's see. Questions about what our annual preventive maintenance street overlay pavement program needs to be, whether we need to reanalyze that, and a desire to have a presentation on level of investment that would be needed to sustain the roads. And I, I think we answered that by saying that we have a little bit more work to do on the PCI ratings and the pavement management study, but that we would work toward providing Some questions about preferred design for the skate park, and some desire for additional sketch or description of that recommendation. And there was a question about the final proposals for the council goal on Old Town revitalization, and committed to providing more information on those. Another question with regard to complete streets, this was more about prioritization of those projects and a desire to see the, the full list of those. Okay, one more little bit. Let me see if I have any on this one. I think that's it. The rest of them were document clarity questions or won't require a response in a formal
As council rookie, I want to formally thank you for those notes and all that work.
Because you would have been taking them.
Because I used to fall to the rookies.
That's halfway through the meeting, that here.
How, how did that tradition ever fail? Meeting, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Thank you, Beth Ann.